All right. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Do you want to do a roll call to start?
Yes ma'am.
All right, Von Krick?
Sort of here.
Benedetti?
Yeah.
Cabo Watten?
Present.
LaFever?
Here.
Pete?
Here.
Perugia?
Virtually here.
Rosetta?
Here.
All right, Quorum present, Mayor Pro Tem Benedetti.
Okay, well, like I stated on Monday, I hope if people had questions, they were able to get them to Mr. Church in a timely fashion so he could look at them. Um, I know Wendy you had quite a few of them and hopefully he got a chance to get to them.
We got a few of them.
Okay. So Scott, if you want to, why don't you, did he, did he answer you Wendy or no?
Uh, we went through a few of them where we had time for and he did answer those, um, but there's probably more to discuss in general, so.
Okay. Well then,
Could I start?
Why don't I let you start?
Hey Rick, this is Karen. Could I start with, um, just a couple of general things?
Sure.
Okay. So first of all, I just want to say that last year or the last few years, we've had a tick list. So we start out with the mayor's budget and then there's a list of the things that we want to propose to change. Not, not we, but you as a council. And at every, the beginning of every meeting, at the end of every budget meeting, I usually go through that list just to make sure everybody's in agreement. Yes, we're keeping that on the list. No, we're not. So I'd like to continue that this year. And then, um, many of the questions that I got from the council this time were regarding healthcare and motor vehicle pool. So I just want to go through a short explanation of that so that might help. So healthcare, um, we are self-insured, so we get, um, projections from our healthcare provider and MedTipster who provides our, um, prescriptions. And then we cost that out. And then we decide, we figure out how much it costs per employee. And this year, what we did differently was we have opt-out, which costs the city much less than the actual insuring of a family or a person. And we took the opt-out insurance amount and put that in, included that when we calculated the one person. I used to say, oh, there's five people that opt out in the police department. So the police department's healthcare went down, if that makes sense. But then during the year, you could have someone turn 27 or 26, I'm sorry, and then they would end up on our insurance. So we decided that we would take, because we do have so many opt-outs, we would take that and it would benefit any department. So it didn't even matter, you know? Um, and that really matters in DPW when people move around. So that's why you're seeing changes in the healthcare line or health insurance line across the board. And then the motor vehicle pool is an internal service fund. So what that means is it's a fund where we accumulate money for the benefit of the whole city, all funds. And we set the rates. I'm provided a calendar year expenses of maintenance and fuel for each vehicle from the motor vehicle pool supervisor. And that's a calendar year report based on the, because of when the budget is. And so when I total that up, if your vehicle accounts for 10% of the cost in that calendar year, you will be assigned 10% of the cost for this coming budget. The budget is set by Mr. Hogan. And this year I added just a little bit to it because we seem to be going over in that budget. And I wanted to make sure that we had enough funds. All the rental income that you see on that, um, fund comes from other departments within the city. And that is something that we distribute. It's nothing, it's not like we're charging outside when it says rent. So I know that's a little deceiving. And a few people asked about that. So I just wanted to answer those two questions. And we do have a few things on the tick list already, things that have come to light or, um, just maybe I've been thinking about. So I already addressed the state shared revenue will change. And I was on a call with the state today, a webinar. They're not giving much direction yet. They said a few weeks out, so we'll have to work, wait for that. The same will be for Act 51 money. May have a reduction in our attorney fees. Scott will probably speak to that a little bit. Bean brought forth the AccuMed change, so that's going to be a reduction in $10,000. The fireworks, we have eliminated them at the council meeting, so that's an $18,000 reduction. We have one, um, account that we didn't, Debbie, um, didn't put in overtime for the election, so we had to add in $2,500. There was a longevity correction, so that's going to go up a little bit. But not many changes, but those are the different things like, that would be on the tick list. Or if you suggest something, we'll add that to the tick list.
Okay.
And now I'm done, Rick. Sorry I talked so long.
Okay. Well then, you mentioned something about Scott's going to speak to the attorney fees.
Well, because I know we have to do the RFP and I'm not sure exactly how we're going to handle that. So I don't want to give any misinformation, so I'll leave it up to him.
Well Scott, since you brought it up, do you want to go ahead and talk about that? So we know exactly what we're looking at?
Yes, I can if you'd like. Making sure I'm unmuted here. We have, uh, as you may recall, when made the interim appointment effective January 1, part of the, uh, approach of the interim appointment, interim appointment, was trying to get a grasp of how much work is really entailed. Are we paying a fair rate? Is it as much work as, uh, the city attorney had told us it was? Or were there any potential efficiencies or change in workload? One of the things that, in talking with our current city attorney, uh, they believe that there, there is a reduction would be appropriate. And currently we're, we're paying 14 something per month. Um, and they thought that a, um, what their plan is moving forward, uh, in the fiscal year is at 12,000. So that's a, right at a $25,000 reduction. Would take it from the 169 currently budgeted down to 144. That is based on what they've seen at the courts. As far as how much time is taken for prosecutions, um, Director Voss or Chief Scheffler can, uh, pipe in and correct me if I'm misspeaking. But the feedback we've received from the court, uh, or our officers at the court, um, they're not spending near as much time there. That Anthony, when he handles prosecutions, uh, is extremely efficient, uh, the time, uh, turnaround has been very efficient. So we feel that, uh, that's, that's a fair number. Still go out for the RFPs and whether that, uh, remains with who is currently serving in an interim capacity or not. They at least have told us, they think that's a more accurate reflection of, of what the workload or how many hours are required to do the job. Regarding the RFP process, something I was just speaking with the mayor on, uh, just before the meeting tonight, whether it's next week or the following week, um, obviously this whole COVID-19 inability to meet face-to-face, not being able to do business as we all would like to and prefer doing business. We have not sent out for or requested RFPs yet. I absolutely dread the thought of interviewing, uh, potential inter, uh, city attorneys via Zoom rather than having a face-to-face interaction and getting a feel for individuals. So to me, I, I think it would be appropriate unless something changes for the better very soon, it would be appropriate that we do some type of an extension and push back the RFPs beyond the June 30 because quite frankly, I don't see us being able to do a whole lot in person and come forward on top of budget and everything else we have going on right now with a 7-1 effective date of any change.
Okay. Okay, Wendy, I see your finger up. Are you waving or you want to ask a question?
Yeah, both. So Scott, on that issue specifically, are we going to maintain the cost of the attorney at 14,000 per month until their contract is over and then change it? Or are they accepting that as of the July changeover of the budget? Does that make?
Yes, I, I have not had that discussion with them. And I, I can ask Alan, uh, what that is. I can tell you right now, we've got, um, some significant things going aside from Riverside Hospital. Uh, we have some significant things going with some Brownfield, uh, potential litigation that they are working on for us. I think part of that tapering down is with hopes that, uh, we're going to have some normalcy in a normal caseload for them, uh, moving forward by July. But I, I can certainly talk to Alan about that.
Thank you.
Well Wendy, since you're there, go ahead. If you had more questions that you did not get the answer to or if any of them that you asked Scott, if you'd like him to answer publicly, if you think we need to. I mean, I know you sent them to me also.
Um, I had quite a few. Do you want me to go through what I sent you pretty much or I don't want to speak all the time on one?
You said you had some more sense then? Or no?
Yes, on certain things, but were we going to discuss like, you know, recommendations for other areas as well? Is that what you would like me to start trying to put on or?
This is what the meeting's for, is questions on the budget. So I can find five of you that agree to pass a budget at some point in time. So that's why we're doing them. So if you have questions, you know, that you need answered, now's the time to do it.
Okay, so, um, I guess a lot of them are comments or requests though as well. So that's what I wasn't sure, like, what direction you wanted me to go.
Well, that's fine. We'll let you go first. You're the new person.
Thanks. Well, in my document that I sent out originally was, uh, wondering whether or not the revenues were overstated. I know, um, I was thinking at least 5 to 10% more of a reduction in revenue at least for, to project for this budget. And then my, you know, for example, things like passport fee, every little detail it seems to me that would be affected. Passport fees, um, uh, trying to read with my glasses, sorry. Property taxes, um, we've already changed collecting fees for late water bills. Whether the boat launch will be able to be used. So, um, I guess the follow-up question to that is, do we have a plan on how we account for all these things that we cannot account for? Would those shortfalls in revenues and divert to taking more money from the general fund? Would we have a list of low-hanging fruit that we want to create? That maybe Stephen would create that we could somehow piggyback off on like, okay, all of these things now have to go. One of the things I was going to suggest was the fireworks, but apparently that's already gone. Uh, but things like that, that we start ticking off the budget as we see that revenues aren't where we expected them. Or maybe a combination of both. So I, I don't know what the plan is for that. That's the overall overriding question. And then there's some other little things I have here and there.
Okay, well, let's, let's let Karen or Scott answer that or Stephen even, because I think that's a question all of us have.
So let me explain to you that most, okay, the department heads provide their numbers in February. So then we go through meetings in, in March. So I think when, when this was printed, tons of information was not available. They all know that we need to adjust certain numbers. They just don't know right now what that's going to be.
Right.
So I know we have to, we have to, um, pass this budget by next May, right? Like the second meeting in May. So I'm hoping that we can accumulate information as we go. And again, put it on the tick list, which means please make, change the budget per the tick list. It's just some, some name we came up for with this list. So if you have something to suggest, we're going to put it on there. Everybody might not agree and it might get crossed off. But if you want to say, oh, I think we should reduce things by 5 to 10% or just wait for specific department heads to come up with new numbers. Like Joanne is well aware, things will not happen. You know what I mean? Like certain, like you said, passports, people aren't going to be getting them like they did last year. So she will come up with additional information, um, to change them and I will make you guys aware.
Okay, is there a way that, um, you can, we can eventually share a tick list and create one for like emergency need later on? Yeah.
Yes, I keep it in a spreadsheet, so that's probably what I would send out if you'd like it like that, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. That would be nice for us to be able to, um, you know, comment on as well. So if I, you want me to keep going, Rick?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so the next one is in Department 172 on page 55. I kind of just went through the budget by department and made some comments here and there. So I see that, um, we still have potential for getting an IT part-time person for Teresa. And, um, who's mentioned to me that that would be very helpful for her to be able to do more than just basic maintenance problems. And I know we have a new web, um, design that's supposed to be unrolling. So the question is, I guess, twofold. Have we finished paying for the website design? And also are we going to be able to hire an IT person part-time? Or is all hiring, uh, kind of stalled right now? Like no new, is there a no new hire policy? It does appear that there's some money for a part-time IT person.
I don't, Scott, can you, I don't think we've put a hiring freeze on, have we?
Page 55. No, but we should.
I'm sorry, I heard a couple of different people talking. Did Karen speak first?
No.
I'm trying to tell Debbie, page 55, please.
Okay. The, we have told department heads, uh, that we are not in the process of hiring, uh, seasonal, part-time employees. Any, any hiring or additional, um, hires of any sort need to get administrative approval at a minimum. Quite frankly, whether it's seasonal maintenance, organized requisitions, we don't even know what are those programs or activities are going to be up and running until we have, our DPS is back at a full operational level. Makes no sense to be hiring seasonals, things of that nature. So we have, have given some of that direction to our departments. As far as the IT, uh, the website is not complete that I'm aware of. I expect it should be complete, uh, or should have been complete by now. Largely, any potential IT part-time support is largely going to be contingent on getting the website up and running. We do not have money budgeted for the current amount we're spending to create the website and a part-time IT person, um, within the budget. So it is our thought, uh, we have a minimal amount for website maintenance, uh, budgeted throughout the year with the assumption that our website is going to be updated and up and running here in very short order. But we do not have the current amount that's being spent on website, website creation and a part-time IT person budgeted.
Okay. Um, I feel that with, um, how these changes are being made with technology, that that could be a place that we look to fund. Of course, I don't have answers for how to do that, but it just, I just went through and made comments, you know, about things that I thought would be important. Uh, and there's some other things, uh, Scott and I talked about, uh, regarding technology. So I don't know if you want me to bring that up now or when it comes up in my notes. But we had talked about, um, being able to offer a higher quality internet service at least either at the, um, on the city hall grounds. Scott and I talked a little bit about the problems of offering it throughout the downtown. I was hoping to maybe expand free Wi-Fi or, uh, do something to help people be able to access our meetings or perhaps, um, you know, kids in the downtown that might not be able to afford Wi-Fi to do their online classes and so forth. So, um, we talked about that a little bit, but, um, I believe I saw, and it's way back there in Department 930. So this is going to be toward the end of the document. Maybe like page 100 and something, 110-ish or nine. Lisa's also requesting about $5,000 to store, amp up the, um, data storage. And I figure, again, I'm not printing this budget off. I can handle it on the, on my PDF that I saved. But, um, there could be potential for more need to store documents or to work digitally. Uh, and we may need that storage sooner than we think. I don't think we need new laptops. I would prefer to use my own laptop anyway. So if we're looking at cutting money potentially from central office supplies, I would suggest not purchasing the laptops. Maybe one laptop or two in case somebody forgets theirs or has an issue. But I don't think we need a laptop for every, uh, councilperson. So that is on that, I, on the technology front, those are my comments, if anyone wants to.
Well Scott, I guess my question, I don't know if Teresa is on, I, I guess I could look through. But with that comment of Wendy making that, bringing a private computer in, now we have to make sure that it's all set and everything to use on the city's website, right? Cause I mean, we have, we're using it for public business. So I mean, we'd have to make sure, right? I mean, I'm not an IT person, trust me. And you all know that.
Scott, you want me to handle that?
Yes, right ahead.
Okay, um, as far as somebody bringing in their computer from the outside, there's no guarantee what kind of security settings you're going to have, what kind of virus protection you're going to have if you're bringing something into the city's network.
Okay.
So the preference is for us to provide something here for the council to use. It does not have to be a laptop. It can be a tablet, which would be cheaper.
Yeah, that would.
The preference would be for us to provide that.
Okay, yeah, tablet I think would be better then if that has to be the case because we're not storing any documents on that. We're basically just reading the, the, um, agenda. I don't use anything else, so.
Exactly, just for internet.
Yeah, if we could divert the money to the storage or to the internet, that would be probably a better use of our money, in my opinion.
Okay, well, yeah, and, and we can look at that. I mean, if Teresa, if you have some recommendations, I mean, those are.
We've looked at some tablets that would be, we would swap out instead of the laptops. So it'd be a cleaner look and it would be usable for council.
Okay.
Cool.
Mr. Benedetti, if I, if I can also add at this point in time, uh, Councilwoman Pete, uh, touched on it earlier. Several council people have, uh, mentioned, uh, the Wi-Fi service. I think the fact that anybody that's, uh, or shouldn't say anybody, most of the people that are in city hall right now on this meeting are tethering their feed from their cellphone, not on the city's Wi-Fi. Because, uh, I can't have a Zoom meeting on the city's Wi-Fi without it having, uh, I was told I sounded like Charlie Brown's teacher today. The audio was so muffled. But my cellphone on low data mode is fine. So anyway, uh, we have a proposal that Teresa brought forward last week from Tariq, who does a lot of our wireless work within the city. Proposal to beef up and have a robust, uh, wireless presence, um, everywhere from the council chambers, but throughout the building. And I'm assuming it's, it's going to be a secure system. Uh, he, he did a very thorough assessment, uh, walked every nook and cranny of city hall, uh, short of the restrooms and the staircases. And, uh, we have a proposal that, uh, we hope to have on the council agenda for next Monday night to upgrade the Wi-Fi within city hall. Cost is $8,021.50. In checking with Teresa, uh, Tariq is actually able to do the job or begin the job, uh, this week. And our thought would be as while city hall is closed down, um, or we just have skeleton crews not open to the public, there would never be a more optimal time to have the work being done as far as popping ceiling tiles, doing anything that may be necessary. So if we could get a general read, if there's a, uh, if there's support amongst the mayor and council for this, we would like to go ahead and get the ball rolling, still put it on the agenda for formal approval next Monday. Uh, but we would love to take a bold step and be able to, uh, start working remotely or being able to have some wireless work options and functionality within city hall.
And where are we paying for it out of, Scott?
This, this is an eligible expense, uh, with the, um, city hall being a public facility within the DDA district. That is an eligible expense, um, and funds are available within the DDA, um, authority projects line item. So there would not be a general fund budget expense.
Okay.
If, if that is the will of the council.
So, with that being said, Wendy, can we take a break from your questions? And we're going to go and see what the favor of the council is with their opinion on this.
Sounds good.
Right, regarding Scott, that we would still, this is not a vote, just a, would you favor something like this, right, is what we're asking the council?
Yes, basically, if, if there's, if there's, uh, a consent of the council to proceed with this, we would just as soon, uh, make hay while the sun shines, so to speak.
Yeah.
And get some work going this week rather than waiting until next Monday's meeting.
Okay, well.
If there's, if there's any heartburn, there's no problem. We can hold off until next Monday.
Well, I will start with my opinion, which probably means as much as anybody else's, but I think it's a good idea. I mean, we've talked about this for the whole time I've been on the council. And even before I was on there, we talked about how hard it was to get good Wi-Fi when maybe we were at city hall for negotiations or things like that. So if we have the money available, we're not making any budget, budget changes because it's coming out of the DDA money, then I think it's something we should do. And that's my opinion. And then as, as I look at my screen, I will go down the screen. So Bill, you'd be next on my screen. What is your favor for this?
No, I have no problem. How much is available in DDA fund?
I will defer to Karen because in that, are, are you saying within that line item this year? Or what the fund balance is for DDA authority projects?
Yeah, the available money.
Karen, do you have that number handy?
Sorry, I had to unmute myself. Scott, I have to run a quick report to give you a fund balance as of.
Just approximately.
Yep. I, I will, while, while Karen is researching that, I will point out or remind the council, some of that money is spoken for. The project redoing the main entrance to city hall, uh, to be a design similar to what it was redone on the north side of, uh, city hall. That is to be paid for out of that project. There is still internal financing, uh, to be repaid to the city, um, by the DDA for some of the city hall renovations. That amount was originally a million dollars and it is an amount less than that now. But I can't remember exactly how many years we paid back on that.
Okay. So if you're, we're working with about 268,000. Can I say 260?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zero or eight?
Two, six, zero.
Okay.
Zero, zero, zero.
Okay. That answer your question, Bill?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, next one down the line would be Scott Cavallone.
Yeah, as long as, um, we have the money, it's budgeted, sounds like through DDA, I'm okay with it. I support it. Think it's necessary and needed to be, uh, operating in this century.
Okay. Stephen, you're next.
As one of the ones with a cellphone hotspot, now you can connect to the Wi-Fi in the mayor's office. I am a yes.
Okay, and since I don't see Timmer's picture, I'll go to her next.
Yeah.
Then Nelson?
I would, I would like to think, is there anything else we need while we have this chance? So we can strike hay while it's hot. As far as the IT related issues with, at city hall. I mean, is this just going to be a patchwork? We're just going to take us beyond the normal standard city hall Wi-Fi in, in Don River?
Do you want to answer that, Scott?
Yes, so I was just going to say, I was going to defer to Teresa to answer that.
Um, councilman, this is a whole new system. It'll be very robust and it should take us for a long time.
That doesn't change my answer. I was still, still saying yes, but I was just making sure we're getting our bang for our buck. So yes.
And of course Wendy. And of course, Wendy, sorry to make you laugh, but that's where you fell on the screen.
That's okay. I support it because I brought it up. I'm also wondering, do we need to increase that data storage then or no? Or how how critical is that for us to add to the budget?
The number I have in there is good for the data storage.
Yeah, but then how critical is that? Is that necessary to make the internet run faster or?
Oh, that's just for, that's just for data. That doesn't have anything to do with the internet.
And then how critical is that at this point? Or is that just a want need eventually?
No, that's as much as works our growth and as much as we're making everything digital, it's just upping our storage.
Um, is that something he would roll into what he's doing and that maybe give us a reduction for an overall package type thing if we wanted to do the Wi-Fi and storage?
That's from separate, the separate people. It's it's hardware and he's just doing the Wi-Fi.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
With that one out of the way, are there, you have more? I know.
Yeah, I got more. Um, so Parks and Facilities is on page sixty-six. This is Department two six five. And I guess my, one of my questions that was actually brought up by a senior who is pretty active at Westfield Center. So the discussion was that they are, the seniors are very concerned about starting their meetings back up. And that's a different issue that I can work on with Joanne. But at the same time, one of the reasons why they were cautious was because of the cleaning material that they use, the spray is just a basic tabletop cleaner. It is not a disinfectant. She has the label from the bottle and asked the company and did some research. So we have that on our side. We know a little bit about, you know, her, her not complaint, but but concern. Um, so I'm just wondering, your custodial supply budget is going from forty-three hundred to thirty-six hundred, which is a cut, but at the same time, they're afraid that the exposure is not just to the tables, but it would be also for the chairs. We might have to wipe them down on a daily basis, like every night or perhaps every event. Would it be more costly to have a Lysol type product or a bleach type product? So in general, I don't know if this comes out of specifically that part of the budget or or with the contract with the cleaning company that might need to be updated. But I foresee that there is definitely going to be a need for an increase in spending because of the type of cleaner that they would now have to use and the frequency of how often they would need to clean. So that might also cost us more money in custodial services. But that was a place where I saw it and thought I should bring it up.
I have a question to that. Who's going to wipe it down after every event and after every meeting? Who's going to do that?
Right, so do we need an increase in custodial service in general as well? Will that change the contract? Do we have to add on? I don't know. Is it the person's responsibility at the who runs, you know, who's working at the center at that point? I don't know.
It'd be something for him to do.
Scott, can I, this is Joanne.
The officer to do that.
Joanne, you wanted to speak to that?
Yeah, if I if I could, Rick, just Wendy, to your question about the product that is being used, we have, we have changed the product to the same product that we use at the ICE Arena. It is, you know, certified for, you know, all different strains of viruses and such. Currently, it's our building attendant staff that would, you know, that has wiped out, that wiped down the tables and chairs and then we will work on a protocol to make sure that when we do reopen that that is in place. But that's, but the the cleaning product and is, it's a product that we use at the rink. It's very cost effective and it's a system that you, you know, you mix the, you dilute the the product and to specifications. So I think that that's that's pretty much handled.
I'm in my meeting, honey. Sorry, my son is photobombing my meeting here. So but the question is, do we need to increase the budget for custodial supplies because of the frequency or the type of cleaner that we now have to purchase or the amount of it that we'll be using? I'm concerned that there's a reduction and I feel like there's going to be an increase in need for cleaning supplies. And this could be even for like DPW where the guys are going to have to wipe down the the steering wheels of the trucks or the handles. And so it's kind of a more overreaching question. I just happened to see it here at Parks and Rec and and then this person brought up the issue, so.
Well, Wendy, this this is where it goes back to when Karen talks a little bit about a tick list thing. If you, I mean, and it's and it is, it can be an individual person that's requesting that. So if you think it needs to be, we can leave it where it's at if that is your question. And then when we go through the tick list, we can talk about those things again. So I mean, if if you want to increase it to what it was last year, we can do that. Um, I'm trying to see here because Lord knows I.
I think forty-three hundred.
Yeah.
Last, last time, four, seven hundred dollar difference.
Yeah, and I mean, we could put it back to forty-three hundred and and go from there and, you know, if the council.
Yeah, they think we need it, though. I that I don't know. I don't know if there are increased costs in this new product or it just seems to me that we need to amp that back up.
And unfortunately.
We don't want to be liable for somebody getting sick.
Right, and I think Karen's talked to this in a roundabout way at the start of the meeting is unfortunately, we we could make this budget, but who knows what's going to happen because, you know, I can guarantee you that the court costs are going to change. The ambulance revenue is probably going to change. I mean, I don't need Steve and Dean and all them to speak on it, but we probably know all those things are either going to probably decrease with everything going on right now and how it decides we open things up. I mean, one of the things is, is, you know, they could come along and say, well, the most you can ever have is, you know, fifteen people in a room. Well, that's going to change everything we do for seniors and all the all the stuff there. And even for other issues that we rent Cultural Center for or Westfield Center for. So I mean, yeah, we can do that, but I think all of us need to go into this where our eyes wide open that we're working on a budget that we truly don't know what the future holds for us this time in the budget. Before, we sort of knew or we learned from either observing as a resident or being on the council for a few years or more than that or a department head, but we're all guessing, I think, in my opinion, at this right now. And I think that we hope that we did a good job with that.
Yeah, I mean, I I prefer maybe to go back at least to where we were last year because I just feel like we are decreasing it. I my suggestion is to increase it, but I mean, I certainly wouldn't think a decrease is, I mean, these are just pennies in the budget, but just again, I don't want to be liable for somebody getting sick. And I think we need to do a really good job of cleaning our public facilities this, you know, everywhere, City Hall, pool, everywhere, you know, so.
No, I know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And that could be a cost that's in multiple budgets, departments budgets, but I like I said, we saw it in Parks and Rec and thought we should amp that up.
Right. Karen, and Karen, can you add that to the list?
Yes, I already did.
Okay.
And I will confirm with Bill Hogan, since that's his budget, it's Parks and Facilities. Um, and I'll have a conversation with him and maybe he has, you know, a different number now.
Okay, and Scott, I believe you had a question.
Sorry.
Scott, did you raise your hand?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay.
Um, I just liked seeing the look on Scott Cavallone's face. I just want to say that we've, as we've talked about ramping back up to normal, hopefully, normal operations some point in the near future. One of the things I want to assure you, we are, again, what you have in front of you was prepared most likely in February. Whether it was doomsday or fake news, it was not the reality that we've all seen the last several weeks. So I think generally speaking, the mayor's directive to to departments to reduce their their budgets and their department expenditures by three percent on discretionary spending, this could be an example of where one of those discretionary spending recommendations was.
Yes, I agree.
That is, that's a different reality than what we have today. I want to assure you that whether it is our work sites or any of our places that are open for the public, we are going to do the necessary things to make sure things are clean, they're sanitary. We're providing a safe work environment and a safe environment as much as we have control over for the people who are coming in and out of our buildings, whether they're work for us or they're our residents. Hopefully, there's not much of a difference in the type of cleaners used from a cost standpoint, whether there's a change in the frequency of it. It is my hope from some of the information Mr. Haley has shared that whether it is FEMA funding or reimbursement for some some new things that would be, we would be classify as COVID-related expenses. If we have new procedures or protocols in place that we now have that we didn't have to face before, hopefully, some of those increased costs will be offset or maybe funded through some FEMA. We can at least ask or submit those for funding. But I I want to assure you, if it comes down to making sure that something comes in within budget or is safe, I, my position is we're going to err on the side of making sure it is safe. If we come in over budget, that's a cost of doing business and providing a safe work environment for our people.
Okay.
Okay, I'm winding, oh, sorry.
Bill, you had a question someplace, I think.
No, I've been attending meetings for thirty years, okay? I've never seen the format done quite like this, okay? Karen, can you comment on that, on what I said?
Hello?
Well, I think he asked.
Sorry, I was muted. I'm sorry, I had muted myself earlier.
Karen, Karen, I've been running for like thirty years, okay, and you've run probably for like twelve of them. I've never quite seen a format format done like this. Where we just stop, just questions, jump all the page in the whole booklet and discuss everything at one time. In the past, you've always discussed a department at a time and had the department head there to discuss it with us, okay? I think Wendy has a lot of valid points, but we're just jumping over the whole book. Is that the current budget this way?
Karen, I think I can answer that one if you don't mind.
Okay, I didn't want to step on your toes.
Nope. Yeah, Bill, I think it is. I'm sorry, I'm sorry if you think it's different, but I mean, I, you know.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
I mean, you you know my opinion on it, that I think they did a great job with it and I would have gave it to them today, but I can't.
That's fine.
I'm letting people ask their questions.
Hey, Rick?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Timber. Uh, I have to agree with Villa Fever. I'm going to tell you something. This is a mod podge right now that I'm just about ready to hang up. And the thing about it is, we took it by department and department and let the department heads talk about their budget individually. And that's the kind of format that I think works. Because everybody has, if we all have a question, we can question that department. We're all over the place on this. It's not making much sense to me at all.
And and I ask questions to be written and sent to.
It doesn't matter. I don't, it doesn't matter. That still does the mod podge. We all are going to have questions.
Timber, you're going to get your chance to speak.
No, I don't want my chance to speak. What I'm speaking about is the format because I don't think we're, I think we're all, we're all going to have a question about a certain department when the department comes up. But I've got questions, but I I want to hear from the department head explaining their budget to each department.
And when we get to you, you can ask your questions and direct them to the department head then.
That's what I'm wondering. When is the department head going to speak, like we would say, police and fire one night, parks and rec one night? So we can just add that person in and we can ask our questions then. Right now, I'm all over the place. I don't know what, uh, you know, well, it's just, it's very confusing to me. And, you know, I don't want to grandstand or anything, but I just think that we need to hear from the department heads about their department. That's all. And then if we have a question about what they might want or say, then they can explain it right then. That's my feeling.
Okay.
You know, I'm just going to say that's how, yeah, I've been here twenty-seven years and I think it's it's an appropriate way to do it. I mean, the budget's great. I'm not complaining about the budget. I think it's great. It's the format of how we're doing this.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
That's all it says.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Okay, sorry, I'm trying to do this by department and giving page numbers, so I'll just maybe pause a little bit and let you find it. The next item that I wanted to ask about was on page one eleven, one one one. These are commission. Starts on page one one one. So I guess I'm a little biased toward the City Beautiful Commission because I know the work that they're trying to do and we don't always have the money for what we proposed in in the past. So for example, and again, I know that it's a trivial thing, but just that's kind of what I thought I would put forth, but it appears that the Civic Commission gets specific amounts of money to do events. Beautification Commission gets three hundred dollars. The problem with that is that we had an estimate for the flowers for the city this year, for the springtime flowers that go in the baskets and in front of City Hall. And then I think we also do the culture's, no, hang on, the historical museum. And they, their budget for that, I think they have a cost of six hundred and seventy dollars. And they just, they just don't know where they get that money from each year. And I know Kyle has said, you know, don't worry about it. I'll find it. I'll but they never quite had a sense of where that money was coming from. So I noticed that.
The aesthetics account, Wendy.
Sorry?
We set aside fifty thousand dollars for aesthetics. Kyle took the money from the aesthetics account.
Yeah, which is now going to be zero. So that's my question is.
Who says it's going to be zero? I mean, it doesn't have to be zero.
Department night, well, true, but I thought that since it was a specific cost that they can plan for each year now, that this is something they want to do. I know they need new planters. They need, I mean, they need to spruce the place up a little bit. So if at least we can, if if we can at least give them a thousand dollars to plan for, like I said, six hundred and seventy dollars is I I'm pretty sure what the cost of the pottings, I'm not sure if that also included like the mulch and the flowers that go in the City Hall area, but, you know, to round that up to, let's say, a thousand to just allow them to have.
It was more than that.
And and I'm being, yeah, I would give them a hundred thousand, Timber, if I could, but I thought at least a significant amount that they can do what they need to do in the summer. They can rely on it. And then I was looking at comparing that to the Civic Commission, who I know is going to have some events or not, but in regardless of which case, they were budgeted sixteen thousand dollars. They realized approximately nine thousand, I or I think if I'm right. And then we're looking at budgeting them at fifteen and a half roughly. So if we could at least maybe add, and I don't want to pit one commission over another, or if you just want to do it in general, give them a stipend, but surely at least a thousand from the Civic Commission budget can be shifted to the City Beautiful so that they can at least have some sense of what they can spend on flowers. And it would be a specific amount, like for example, you know, specified like landscaping, I believe, in the other departments. Um, this landscaping could then, you know, direct their cost directly to the flowers and not something else. Or may, you know, landscaping could include the pots or whatever needs to be updated to make things look prettier. Thoughts on that? And if it doesn't necessarily, I mean, I know we have a we have a very nice awards banquet, but that's six thousand dollars, I noticed. And I'm not sure if that, if that's, like, I think I paid to come. So I don't know if our paying for that offsets that cost of five thousand dollars, but that could be something that we look at scaling back. I'd hate to do it, but that seems like a big expense. Or even like the chocolate fountain. I know those are not cheap, so if we cut the chocolate. Or even like the chocolate fountain. I know those are not cheap, so if we cut the chocolate fountain and put that six hundred dollars, five hundred dollars to the City Beautiful flowers so that we don't have to worry every year about where they're getting their money from or who they have to ask.
Can I suggest, so Wendy, what amount would you, I'm gonna add that to the tick list, so it's something again, this is a suggestion. So what amount would you like to increase it by?
Um, I'd say a minimum, just to get them by would be a thousand.
So add a thousand dollars to the three hundred.
Yeah, that would probably.
Okay, I will add that to the list and then like I said, when it, we will review these and then you guys can decide, keep it in, take it out, whatever, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Cool, thanks.
Yeah, who, who are we giving plaques and trophies to? I see an increase in that budget. I'm not sure, like, we're, we're upping that from two hundred to five hundred dollars? And again, that's nitpicking it, but I'm just trying to get money over to the City Beautiful so that.
I think you were right, thinking it was gonna be so many retirements.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure. Okay.
It can be lowered.
Uh, this was all in thoughts of, you know, not changing, you know, not increasing the budget every time I bring something up. I was just trying to leverage it and see, you know, those kind of things. Um.
And Wendy, one of those things I'll add to your, your flowers is, I know in the past that they budgeted it and I know that Kyle had talked to either Trent Wood or somebody and, and there's times that she would get a discount and things like that, or some donations from them. So that might be another reason why their budget never really saw that much of an increase, because they were willing to do that.
Yeah, but I think the point is that they would always have to ask and then somebody would figure it out. And I, this just makes it more, um, okay, it's there. Work with it. If it's gonna be more than a thousand, scale it back and buy cheaper flowers. But they do work with a grower and I think you saw a significant improvement in the length of time and the size of the baskets as they made it throughout the, um, throughout the summer. So they, they have a high-quality grower that's actually a local, um, the um, Trenton High School principal. It's his dad, I believe, that runs that growing facility. So we are using local people, uh, community people for the growing. Um, you know what, I'm gonna have to say that I think that covers all of my questions other than, and I'm sure it's gonna come up, like, like Timber had mentioned, the overall picture from each department, such as like Joanne can tell us if there's gonna be any changes in fees for, like if we're gonna go to the pool, or if we're gonna go uh, sign up for a class and that sort of thing. And then um, also the prod, the capital projects. And at the end of the meeting or at some point in time, I really want to discuss uh, uh, looking at the next capital project. And I talked a little bit with um, Scott about the money in the DDA we talked about earlier. Um, but I would really like to see a, um, a new space as we, if we spruce up the city hall steps, if there is something we can do to spruce up the rest of that place and make it an, uh, open gathering space where people want to come and have meetings. And I know there's a lot of building gonna go on downtown and we, we need to bring city hall a little bit up on uh, on um, where other cities are looking more aesthetically pleasing. Um, so if we could, uh, after the budget's done, you know, think of, think about putting together some ideas for what we can do to spruce up uh, the city in general.
Okay.
All right, so I think I'm done and I think uh, I'm interested in hearing what everybody else has to say. That's my.
Well, Timber, why don't we make it your turn?
Make it my turn for what?
To go through on your questions or concerns over the budget. And if they're directed, if they're directed at the department head, they're all on here, so you can direct them at the department head. I see Dean, I see Bill Hogan, Steve Voss, Mr. Dogquest, I think all the department heads are logged in.
Okay.
And I don't know if, if Karen, you have, or Debbie, you have to unmute them? When she calls them or they unmute themselves?
Can I mute themselves?
Uh, I don't know, sometimes.
They should be able to, Rick, I believe they should be able to unmute themselves. If not, if they're not able to, they can raise their hand and I will unmute them.
Okay. Okay, Timber.
All right, well, I've got some questions. Um, I know that Director Voss had brought up, and I spoke with you about this, about, you know, doing some incentives for, you know, the police and fire during this COVID and stuff. And um, I'm concerned about that because number one, um, of course, the police and fire in my, in this town for me are sacred cows as far as what, you know, saving lives and doing what they do and they're our most valuable asset. And then the DPW too. Um, but my concern is, where do you pick and choose who to give this hazard pay to or, or the incentives or whatever, how you want to do it? That was one of my concerns. And I, you know, I'm hearing a lot about maybe spending money, but uh, I'm really concerned about this budget and um, where we're gonna get the money. We're losing DTE energy. Um, I'm concerned with the, you know, fourteen people that could retire out of our city next, this, you know, next budget. Um, do we redline some of these jobs and uh, deem them not as necessary going forward because of the loss of revenue from DTE? I mean, I'm really concerned because I think DT, I mean, DT is gonna make a huge cut in our budget and I've been around long enough to see us way back when Jerry Brown was the mayor. I mean, we red circled positions. We didn't want to, but we made the tough decisions and that's why we've been lucrative since, you know, the downturn in the economy. So I, you know, we put in last year fifty thousand dollars for aesthetics. Wendy's talking about flowers. The first round of flowers and everything that was done aesthetically, I did with Kyle. I, you know, got her to, you know, buy the flower. The flowers were bought at Trent Wood. They were given a discount because I know the owner and he did it for me. And that's how we got the first round of flowers up on the light posts and everything else. Um, I was concerned about the cultural center and doing aesthetics there and making sure that that's a focal point of the downtown West Road area. Because, you know, there's more to Trenton than just always trying to do something downtown. So that was done. Um, I'm just concerned that, you know, the depart, I, I'm concerned about the whole thing. I mean, I think we've got a shortfall. We cannot, you know, tap the um, general fund for all of our, you know, spent expenses. We've got to, you know, how much extra do we have in revenue coming in, you know, tax-wise? Uh, there's a lot of things going on. That's why I wanted each department head to come forward and it's hard not to talk face-to-face with people. And I, I wanted each department to go department to by department, night after night, and figure out what their difference is and why they're asking what they're asking and what their concerns are. They know their departments better than we do. So that was my concern, Rick, about not being all over the board on this. I mean, Stephen and Karen and Scott did a great job with this budget, but I still like to hear from the department heads. And if you want to start one department at a time and, and they're prepared to speak, I don't know if you want to do five departments in one night or one department in one night. But I think I'd like to hear from them all.
Amen.
The water rate, I mean, what's the water rate's gonna be? What, you know, there's all kinds of things here. So that's just my concern. Those are my questions.
Okay, I mean, I, like I said, I, I, I would hope that we had all gone through the budget and we have our questions and we presented them to Scott or the department head could answer them. If Scott didn't answer them for us.
Right, I don't have a question.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you my opinion, since we're gonna get any opinions and I'm running a meeting. My opinion is, we read the budget, we decide if we can live with this budget. The department heads gave us a budget.
Right.
Scott and Stephen went through those budget with Karen and said, this is what we could truly afford in those department head budgets. I don't think we should be pitting department heads against them saying, well, is this something you really didn't get? Because that's their job. Their job is to work for the city and keep their department within budget. So if department X says, I need three point six million dollars and Stephen says, yeah, you're right, and Scott agrees with him and Karen says we can afford it, he gets his three point six million dollars. But don't come back and tell me, oops, sorry, I made a mistake. I needed three point seven million dollars. Because you're gonna be told, in my opinion, to live within your three point six million dollars. That's your budget. You picked it. We all know what we're going through. All the department heads, there's no new department heads here. They know what we're up against.
They, they do.
So I'm not gonna sit and, and, and go through each one of them. And I mean, if the whole council decides that what they want to do, that's fine. We could sit and have fifteen meetings. But my opinion is, what questions do you have about the budget presented to us? Get them answered.
Things now, they're changing with, listen, we don't know if we're gonna open the pool. I, I heard today from someone, that we, they might think about not opening the pool. So there's a huge loss of revenue right there. I mean, I'm talking, you know, how are we gonna pay for the pool if we don't open it? How, are we gonna have the street fair? Are we gonna have things, I mean, everything has changed, like you said, since February, since this budget was presented. It's changed, things are changing. Are we gonna be able to have the program? That's my concern. This budget may change tenfold.
It, it might, but we can't fix that down because we don't know.
So how can we approve a budget? How can we approve a budget when we don't know if things are gonna be reopened in May or June or July? Ever so far, everything that we've had going on most in the summer, like the garage sales and different things, uh, I heard today about the pool. I'm thinking, what? How do we even vote this stuff?
Well, I haven't heard about the pool, so I guess, I guess we're gonna address that one with um, Ms. Kanye and ask her to comment on that because, or Scott, has that been discussed?
That's what I heard today from a resident, that they were talking about not opening the pool.
My, my opinion would be that resident must know more than administration does because I have not heard that one yet.
Right, well, that's what I got, I heard this.
Well, yeah, I'm not questioning that you heard it, but uh, if the mayor is shaking his head no, um, I, we had discussions uh, today with uh, with Tim and Joanne at Recreation, uh, with Karen and I and John. Um, you know, I, there's, there's a huge question mark on everything right now.
Right, right.
Between Washington and Lansing, when we're gonna, gonna green light and amber light or are we gonna stay on a red light for things? Um, if anybody, if anybody outside of those departments or administration knows what we're doing more than we do, I, I, I guess I'd like them to let us know.
Well, I guess, Scott, people I think are just questioning, when I got a call today, they've heard this. I'm questioning you because, you know, we, nobody's talked, we haven't talked about any of this. All I'm saying is, this budget could change tenfold from what was presented. So that's why I said, I, you know, what does the department head to do if things don't happen for them in their department? What's plan B? In the bu, their budget, what's plan B? This is unprecedented in time. What's plan B?
Well, wait, wait a minute. So first off, and yes, Steve, I know you're waiting, so please wait patiently. Um, yes, you're right, Timber, we may not have revenue from the pool, but guess what? There's no expenses with the pool either. As of now, I mean, there's gonna be, if, if the pool, if the pool doesn't open, there'll be no lifeguards, no chemical upkeep, no, no water use, nothing.
What about the payment, what about the payment on the pool? Who's gonna make that payment?
Well, we, we pay for that thing every year. We never generate enough revenue to pay for that, so.
It'll be double worth, Rick. It'll be double worth.
You're right. You're right, Timber. You're right.
Pool revenue, probably about a hundred and twenty thousand, is that?
Okay, so let me ask you this, Bill and Timber, let me ask you this. So would we like to tell all the department heads they got one week to come back and cut five more percent out of their budget? Because that's what you're telling me is, you want us to find more money in case we don't make money and that's the only way I can do it is cut budgets. Am I wrong, Karen?
Well, I know, in the past, in the budget, I went through with the help of Karen or Bill, we went through and cut more money out of it. We've been on for an hour and ten minutes, the only way to do it is spend more money.
Okay, right.
We're spending more money every time we talk, costs a thousand, two thousand dollars. That's all fine, and this environment, I can say everything for sure, we're gonna have less money this year than we had last year, less, for sure.
Budget, every budget I've ever watched, all of a sudden, we magically start paying for things that no department had wanted and we still take money out of the rainy day fund to pay for those things.
It's rain, the rain is over.
One year we turn around and throw a bunch of money, oh, we'll take it out of the, out of the fund for Parks Recreation or different departments. So we could sit and do this, I mean, but we could sit and nitpick the budget all day, but we are not to department heads. We don't know what they need. They do.
Yes, Ricky, you're missing the point.
That's what.
You're missing the point. They don't have a crystal ball. The person that may not have a crystal ball. So we can't spend money and project this stuff that we don't know we have coming in.
Exactly. And.
And that's what the budget wasn't created, great. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, we can't, we need a plan B, period. Because what are they gonna do if this doesn't happen and that doesn't happen? And this, I mean, that's what we need to know. That's all I'm saying.
Karen, you had your hand up.
I'm not sure I was next. Um, so I guess I, I, I think I'd need to clarify again. Um, yes, there will be other changes and hopefully it will be before the second meeting in May. If things come up, then you do a budget amendment. And, you know, let's say it's June and then we find out something else. We will have to adjust the budget. And that's when I come forth with a budget amendment and the, and some direction. And I think that um, each department head is trying to figure out. I know Joanne, Joanne has been on many um, conference calls or Zoom meetings with other parks and recs people and things about, and people about the pool and what will be required or what will be allowed. Um, but she doesn't have any definitive answers at this moment.
That's what I'm getting at, Karen.
I think it's going to be a few weeks. So we might have to cram it all into two short meeting, I mean, two long meetings in May when
That's fine.
Information becomes available. I don't, I'm, I'm just saying, I think, that's, I, I'll let somebody else speak because I know people, a lot of people have their hand raised. But everyone will come up with a plan B if they think things are gonna change in their department. They definitely presented this information prior to that. Okay, I'll, I'll be quiet and I'll let you ask someone else, guys.
Okay, Steve, Voss.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right, I just uh, uh, talk a bit, a little bit about what uh, Timber's uh, concern was with the hazard pay. I understand her concern, but what I think I want to be really clear on, myself and the chiefs have looked at our current budget, our nineteen-twenty budget. We have found that due to, I guess it's, the, the ability to try to hire people has become very tough. We have not been fully staffed yet. In either department, the fire department is finally fully staffed, but however, they weren't for, I'm, I'm guessing six to nine months, never at full staff. So with that said, there is money that is still in our permanent funds that would, like the last nine years, gone back to the city general fund. However, we do have money that could cover uh, most of this, if not all of it. Um, I don't know if that helps you with the question you're trying to.
Can I, can I answer that, please?
Absolutely, Timber. As long as my dog stops farting.
That's okay. Um, yeah, I see where you're coming from. Yes, you, you and your department have that reminder that you didn't hire or you didn't spend. Number one, that's good. Number two, what about the other departments that might not have that money? But those employees have done all their doing and cleaning and doing everything, you know, during this, you know, COVID environment? And how do you, how do we say what they don't get, they have to pay, because their department doesn't have money in their department? It's like, how do you pick and choose?
Right, and that's not for me um, to decide as far as the other departments. Um, the one thing I can say is, is um, you know, these essential employees that have been forced to come to work, they have a complaint, but they're forced to. They've been in this environment now for four weeks. Um, things are different. My, my opinion was, I, I, I thought, you know, like a lot of the other cities I'm starting to see now are, are giving um, them a little bit. I mean, they're giving them some kind of a hazard pay. Um, that's, that's where this thought process comes from. And sure, you could go through other, other departments. I, I would hate to, I would hate to offer my opinion, to be honest with you, on another department, other than the police.
You know, Keith, I. You know, Steve, I, I hope, I hope and pray this is over soon. Nobody does more than me. I've been out of work for a month. I, I, like, probably a hundred other business owners in this town may not be able to pay my taxes. What if these business owners fold, can't pay their taxes, the revenue's not coming in because they fail, and then we've made promises to people we can't keep? That's my concern, and I'm gonna say that wholeheartedly. I know I'm one of a many, many that, you know, don't have, businesses that don't have any money coming in, and I know businesses that are probably going to fail. So I'm concerned with the revenue coming in to give these extra incentives. That, anybody, nobody is more generous than me. I love to give people stuff, and I'd love to give everybody what I think they deserve. But we gotta be careful who we do it to and how much we do, and, you know, is the money gonna be there from the business owners and the taxpayers that may be losing everything?
Right, and that's, Timber, and you're exactly correct, and that's why, as department heads, we ask, and we know ultimately that the six council and the mayor are going, along with the city administrator, would make a decision such as this. But we are asking, and, and if, if you can't do it, I'm not gonna hold that against you.
No, nobody likes to do it more than me.
Right, we're just asking because myself and the two chiefs felt this is very appropriate for what these men and women are going through. Yeah, well, there is a difference, Timber, and there is a difference, and I, and I, and I don't think that people quite understand that because out of sight, out of mind. But when I got a person that is, is positive for COVID and is spitting at the police officers and the firemen, that's a difference in my mind. And we have to, and we have to, there is a difference.
Steve.
Yeah.
Okay.
But anybody that works in the city right now can be wrong.
We're gonna move on with the budget, okay?
Let's get back to the budget.
So Timber.
Budget starts July first. Let's, let's talk about the budget, okay?
Timber.
Well.
Timber. Do you have questions on the budget that you've read over?
No, I gave you all, I gave you a synopsis of what I was talking about, Rick. What I'm trying to say is, I'd like each department head to, to, you know, talk about what is different, what's going on, what they think, and maybe a Plan B. That's all I'm saying. Other than that, I have no other questions.
Okay, and we know that, so we'll, we will look at that. We don't even know.
Yeah, move on to someone else.
Okay, Bill.
I talked, Rick, I talked to you, I talked to the mayor about my questions, okay? And concerns, I express them to both of you. And, you know, once again, I'm not happy with the format, so I'm not gonna go ahead and jump all over the page and decide what's gonna go on. If you want me to, I will.
Yeah, if you have specific questions to a line item or a department, please address it now.
Okay, would you give me a list of how many vacancies we have in the city of Trent? By department?
Scott, do we have that list? Church.
I, I would ask, I think John Lob is on here. I believe we have a police vacancy that was just created.
Yes, I can, I can speak to that if you can hear me.
Yes, thank you, John.
Okay, so, right now, since we just have the police, or we had a police vacancy, an additional one, there would be, off the top of my head, I was just looking at my board this morning, I believe it's five now. Two police, let's see, one in DPS, or two in DPS, one non-union, one union, physician, and our instrumentation electrician at the wastewater treatment plant. So a total of five. But we have a candidate in process for police that's kind of taken a stall because of the, our psychological evaluations are temporarily suspended, and we can't proceed without that.
Okay. What's the school liaison officer doing?
We know the answer to that.
Councilman LaFever, he has been assigned back to the road patrol.
Okay, thank very much.
Yep.
All right, and out of those two guys, Steve, are you, in your opinion, okay, in your opinion, I'm asking you, you have just the right amount, guys? You have too many or not enough, in your opinion?
In my opinion.
Based, overall, financially, okay. Obviously, you'd want twenty.
Right, in my opinion, we have, we do have an officer that is currently in the process, which would put us one under budget. Could we, could, could we get by with one less?
You just muted yourself, Steve.
On purpose.
Is that, am I back on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, currently, we've got by with one less officer than the last year, so I'd be remiss to say that we couldn't do that again.
And I guess my question is, in the budget, are we budgeted for the additional officer, or did you cut one out of that?
We have not cut one out of it.
Okay, that's really empty when the mayor, okay? So I'm just throwing it out. If we went a whole year without anybody, okay? Would the mayor, or you, Steve, you think would be fair to say we could take that one person out of the budget and save that seventy grand?
Yeah, we, we've already, Councilman, we've already discussed that with Ms. Saul and Mr. Church as part of the budget. I think the budget is, is, is kind of reflecting that, and she may speak to that. And also with that said, there are going to be, I am guessing that, I wanna say at least two retirements in this budget coming up, which will allow us the opportunity to reassess at that time, too.
Okay. And Stephen, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, appreciate you asking. I had talked to Director Voss about that, that two months ago or so, when we were going through this for the first time, and I did include the same staffing level, but if it comes down to it, that was one of my cost savings ideas that was not included in the budget, but was the sort of primary one that if we needed to cut something else, that like his director had said, we may do without it, you know, they'd like to have that level, but in a pinch, I can definitely, it's something I can live with.
All right, I appreciate that. So Karen, would it be feasible for you to put that on the tick list?
So what Stephen was referring to is we did lower the permanent wages by fifty thousand dollars just because we thought we could get, we will probably get by without an additional position, and I think we might have retirements next year. So then you're gonna have people at lower rates. So I guess we can look more into it to see if there's additional savings and work from there. How about that?
So to take you back off that, and not to cut you off, Bill, I apologize, but that fifty thousand, to be clear, at least from my impression, was that was savings from transit, for a better phrase, was that, you know, when someone retires, we don't hire someone to start the next week, it's, you know, a month or two turnover, sometimes even longer. And that, that was sort of where that came from, but that did include still that officer in there, so it would be on top of that fifty thousand dollar reduction.
Great, thank you. Okay, now let's move on to the DPS. We've got two vacancies in the DPS.
That's correct. One is a non-union supervisor position, and the other is a union maintenance position.
Okay, and how, how long has that spot been vacant?
The supervisor position has been vacant since the end of, well,
March one.
Yeah, three, three, one, and then our senior maintenance position has been open for some time, and we anticipated this non-union position being open, so we wanted to see where that went first and how the structure would be of the department before we went ahead and filled the, the union position.
And how long has that position been open?
The December, John?
I almost wanna say maybe around that time, maybe earlier, maybe November. Or, yeah, no, you're, you're right.
The end of December would be turnover.
Yeah, December twenty eighth was the day it officially became vacated.
Okay. And we've been filling overtime or just not filling it?
It just hasn't been, the, the position that's open is a, a bid position, though we go through a bidding process and odds are, it would be, end up being filled as an entry level labor position.
Okay, all right. So those are still, but you decide you're definitely gonna fill them. Is that, is that fair to say, Mayor, or?
Yeah, those positions are included in the budget, and as I, without getting, I guess, too deep into the nitty gritty of it, you know, that department in particular has a lot of opportunity for organizational restructuring. It's gonna be, it's not, I guess, reflected totally in this budget at this point, but, you know, when I mentioned that there's twenty people eligible to retire right now and four eligible in the upcoming year, that's certainly one of them that's gonna be worked around. I just, it hasn't been incorporated into this. Will definitely, like, almost unquestionably bring about cost savings that aren't in the budget.
I think, you know, I've talked with Bill Hogan over the years. He's had a lot of ways to save money with trash pickup. And I don't think we've implemented any of them, and in my opinion, and to say right now, I've been with him for five years, I think we don't manage the trash pickup properly. I think we can do it for less man-hours and more efficiently than we're doing today. It should, that's how the public guy beats us up, is that they work longer than we do. They work longer and they get, get the job done. We constantly keep on, it's not a five-day week job with trash. It's not. In my opinion.
Okay, Bill.
I'm here. Wanted to hear your comments, my last question. Is everybody unmuted?
Mr. Hogan, you wanna answer that?
Um, everybody on mute.
Saw Mr. Hogan in here. Mr. Hogan? There you go.
Hello?
Hello?
Could you please restate the question?
No. No, Bill, you and I have talked over the years. You've had some recommendations for us to try with the trash pickup, about not parking on one side of the street. At least in your opinion, you thought that would save a considerable amount of time if we, if we did that, okay? And some other ideas about the trash pickup that we discussed, but I think we, we haven't tried any of those ideas.
That, that's correct. That's been proposed. So it's been an uphill battle to get that approved, also getting the trash out of the alleys. So.
I'm just saying somewhere along the way, I would bite the bullet here and say, hey, we got, we're gonna do trash pickup for less money. We can't do it not making changes. We just can't about making changes. And I think you brought it up. I say, I've been to it three times, maybe three years in a row about that. If we're gonna skip back and say the cost of trash is too much, not doing any change in it, then shame on us.
So, Mr. Hogan, my question to you is, you say that you brought those changes up, and I do remember the alley one, which people argued about, and there's no way for me to get your garbage cans out of the backyard into the front and everything else, but what other changes? Bill made a comment about, we don't pick garbage up long enough. I guess.
Who said that?
Didn't you just say we don't do it properly, that it's not a week's job to pick garbage up?
I said, Scott, who's on the council, would tell you right away, he could pick the trash up in half the time, okay? I've talked to Bill about that, and he says, the way we could expedite and make it easier to pick up would be not allowing parking on the street on trash day. The truck will ride along, pick it up, throw them in, and be, and be done with it. We, we don't have so much money, we can't keep spending money and have five days for trash pickup.
Mr. Hogan, would that, do you think that would work?
I think ideally, if we had no parking on trash day, we could be more productive. Shaving off one day, that, that might be doable. Have a four-day week on trash pickup. It's, it's kind of the intention of why we were closing the transfer station, to better utilize that personnel elsewhere, especially in the days where it was underutilized.
Okay, so if we went to no parking on the street, what do you do with those people that don't have, and we have houses, they don't have anywhere to park?
Well, well, that's it. For every idea, there's gonna be these extenuating circumstances. It's not gonna be across citywide. We gotta recognize downtown's unique with all the, you know, multifamily and, and certainly limited off-street parking.
Okay. So who, who would sit and do the study for that? Would that be you? Would that be you and the traffic safety, you and the police department?
Well, oftentimes, on these things, we probably would like to entertain a pilot program, pick an area and see how effective it is, and then, then move off of that with what we learn.
Okay. So you, you think, though, that you could cut down if we did that?
I would hope we can. Friday's our, Friday's our lightest day anyway.
Okay.
So it, it would be nice to think that we could eliminate Friday trash pickup.
And we pick up from what time to what time?
Well, the guys start at seven, and it's, you know, three o'clock. They, they come in at two thirty, wash up. So it's a shorter day than the private sector.
Yeah. And then, so what, with that being said, would we then change the street sweeping schedule too, or no?
Yeah, everything goes hand in hand.
Okay. But they still wouldn't go out on trash day? They'd go out the day after because the garbage cans are still in the streets, so you can't sweep, you know, you'd have to sweep around all of them.
That, that's exactly right.
So when you sweep, you're not gonna prove anything by no parking in the street for street sweeping, because the cars will be back there the next day.
Yeah, and that's what we battle already.
Okay. Okay. Bill LaFever, do you have any other questions for any department heads?
At this time, I'm gonna say no, but I've got a lot of things I'll comment, not perfect time.
Okay. How about Scott Kabelotten?
All right, good evening, everybody. Well, I, I'll comment on, on Councilman LaFever's comment earlier, and Bill, just, I, I'm, yes, I'm in the business of waste collection, but I would refrain from making at least my opinion known on the trash collection, because I have not been close enough to the subject like Mr. Hogan and some of the others in the city. So I, you know, I know what the standards are, but every community is different that I look at, so I don't know what's, there, there are unique spots about Trenton, and I don't know the, the pros and cons on, on that. But I'm always happy to throw out my two cents if it's ever wanted, so. As far as the budget goes, Rick, I, I have kind of some similar concerns from a, and maybe it's because I'm the new guy, but I, I have some concerns about the post-COVID world, COVID-nineteen world, and revenue, and how is that going to affect us? And I know it's an unknown at this point, because, believe me, if somebody does know it, they have the crystal ball and they'll probably play well in the stock market, but, but, you know, that's, that is my concern is, you know, let's say we approve the budget with some minor alterations here and there, we'll pretty much approve the budget as is, move forward, and, you know, come July, August, December, I think we're gonna be short on revenue. I really do, but how, how do we overcome that? You know, what do we do? It sounds like we do budget amendments, but where does that money come from? And that's, that, that is a big, big concern of mine. I don't know if you've dealt with that before in, in previous budgets.
Years ago, when Mr. Brown was here, I mean, I sat on the other side of the table, but it was basically laid out that you find us temp- it was basically laid out that you find us 10% or you find us employees. So I mean, yeah, and that was back when things really took a bad hit. I mean, back when the housing market crashed and everything else. Look, I, I, I understand everybody's concerns. I really do. And don't get me wrong, I have the same concerns you do when it comes to the budget. But we, we're not gonna know, and I would be very surprised if we know by the end of May. You know, we could push this off to the last day of May, like it's done in the past years, and we're still not gonna know. Because by then you'll have half the society back working, maybe, I think, in my opinion. And, you know, I know Karen took into account some things when she did it for the self-insurance fund in itself. I mean, she added to that. So I mean, we're trying to guess where we're at with everything. But now that it looks like, yeah, the pool's not gonna open when it usually does. Okay, so we're gonna have to adjust for that a little bit. And, you know, I could probably guarantee, like I said before, the police department revenue is gonna be down, so hopefully in a month or, you know, in, well, less than a month, so by the time this has to be approved, the departments will have come and said, hey, these are the areas we lost revenue in, so we need to readjust it within the next couple of weeks for next year's budget. I mean, Mr. Hogan probably tested the fact, well, maybe not, because people have more time to spend at home. They're probably cleaning their houses out more than they ever have. But I would assume our special pickups are down, you know, the, uh, the the civil infractions are down for speeding and parking and all those different things. The, the, you know, the accidents are down, EMS is down. Everything's down. I know the rental's down for the, for the Westfield Center. So I mean, we know some of those things. It's been a month now. So hopefully, the department heads can get Karen and Scott and go, look, we're gonna say this is what we lost so far, and what do we project we will lose till, I don't know, August or September, if these things don't improve?
Yeah, and I mean, you hit on, you know, you hit on the points of Westfield and, and, you know, Kennedy and all these, uh, other locations, police and fire. What we, what we see today, and, you know, let's take Westfield for example. Are, because we're not generating Westfield today, or revenue for Westfield today, is that gonna carry over? Like, are there any impacts of that that will carry over into this next budget? It's like, if we didn't generate enough revenue on this budget, are there some costs that are gonna be automatically carried over because they couldn't be dealt with in this budget, at the end of this budget because of obviously COVID-19? Do those costs carry over and compound into next year's budget?
Jared?
So I, I think I wanna understand your question a little better, so if you're saying, if we need to fix something at the Westfield Center, and we don't do it this year because the revenue's down, are we gonna have to do it yet, next year? Yes. Right? I mean, if you had something you're gonna fix, that type of expense, I mean, yeah, you're gonna have to.
Right.
You're not gonna have some different expenses. I'm sure your electricity's gonna be down. Your water uses is just gonna be down. You know, I mean, those type of things. Because of the building being closed, but you're still paying your people. So I think you're gonna have expenses there.
To an extent, you're still heating the building or cooling the building, depending on what time of the year it is.
Yeah.
I mean, it may not be at peak levels, but still, you're, and I guess that's where I'm, that's kind of where I was going with it. We're still gonna have like these expenses coming into Ju-, or let's say, May and June. And we're not seeing that revenue, so are those costs going to have to be added into next year's budget because we're kind of wrapping up this year's budget, or?
No, we would have to, so then, that just means, so let's say that we go, whatever it is gets paid in the year it actually happens. So we would have to pay those in this budget that ends June 30th, 2020.
Okay.
If we run over budget, it uses fund balance.
Fund balance, right.
Yeah. Which we have budgeted to use anyways. I have a, I had projected that we weren't gonna use more than we originally budgeted. I will see after the state gives me some type of information. So. I hope that, I hope that.
It does. It, it, no, Karen, thank you, it does. You know, I, I did, I, I submitted questions and my apologies, because my questions came out this morning to, uh, Mr. Church, and I didn't expect full-blown answers today, so. But, I mean, overall, Karen addressed it earlier in, in her, um, her comments. I, I did have concerns about the motor vehicle pool, um, because it seemed like every, just about every department I saw that had a vehicle that was serviced under motor vehicle pool, you'd see, um, a percentage of increase, so, unders- understand that. The one thing I did not under, I, I still don't understand, and Karen, if you can answer this. You touched on it, you touched on rental in motor vehicle pool. What, what exactly is rental? Is that like a, uh, like motor vehicle pool purchases the vehicle and then rents it back out to the respective department?
Nope, I charge, let's say I charge the police department X amount of dollars.
Okay.
So that, because it's an internal service fund. So the only way that money comes into that fund is by the other department paying them money to support the service they're providing, which is all the maintenance and all the gas and oil for those vehicles.
Okay. Okay, understood.
Rent, rent is not a great description, I guess, for that account, but it's rare that we change the description.
Okay, no, fair enough. Um, no, I mean, unless we wanna go, you know, um, line by line, but yeah, I mean, my, my primary concerns are, are really the budget, or the rev- potential revenue shortfall. We don't know what that is. I don't know if, um, you know, we know what's going on with DTE, but the, the one that I don't ever hear anything about is, um, Fiat Chrysler, FCA, uh, do, how are they doing in, you know, I mean, do we have relations with them? I know it's not exactly budget, but it, it is in the same sense too, because, you know, if the auto industry's gonna take hits in this market, is that going to impact FCA and what could be the, uh, the detriment of that?
I'm hoping Scott will answer that. The other Scott, not me. As far as we have.
My understanding, and if Mr. Dawkless would like to pipe in here, um, my understanding is, I, I think they have approached through the assessor about the extension of some favorable, um, I guess whether it's, uh, an, an extension of any of the abatements or the IFTs, uh, that may be expiring. Do you have any insight in that that you're able to share, John?
Okay, can you hear me? Oh, I'm here.
Yes, we hear you. No, now you muted yourself again. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me now? We, we do have a, um, on, on the, uh, on the, on Chrysler's, um, new plant that was built in 2006, um, the IFT on that, um, parcel will sunset. Oh, I wanna, I believe in, oh, I can't get, I can't get to my, but I do believe it, it, it sunsets in 20, 2020, I think it does sunset this year in 2020, but I will get that for you for sure. And, um, we have not been, we, we were gonna schedule some meetings with them about this, you know, about starting this, um, what the assessment will be on that property. But we are, we are hoping that it, we, you know, I am, I am hoping to talk with them, and I'm, I'm sure with Scott, to make this, um, at least minimally revenue neutral, so that we are, you know, so that we are not losing anything on that, on that, on that, uh, on that piece when, when the IFT does sunset. So I am planning, um, talks with them, but, um, at this point with the COVID, we are, we are, we are unable to meet with them right at this time.
So we, so John, we don't really, I mean, that's kind of, that, that's kind of like un, um, undiscovered, hate to say it, undiscovered potential at this point?
Well, absolutely. The only thing you wanna remember is, FCA, uh, does not wanna pay anymore in, 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 in any property tax at all. So that is going, you know, that is gonna be an issue, and we are, but, you know, I think, you know, bringing council, administration and council in on this so that we can, uh, prepare a plan for them, or, or, or at least a, a reasonable, um, evaluation to the plant, you know, based on a square foot, um, uh, amount, uh, will be to our, would, would be to our benefit, but we also do not wanna get into an attacks appeal with them on that site. So I think if we can mediate, mitigate something with them, we would be, you know, further off. They understand our situation with DTE, but, you know, um, business is business and, you know, we're, you know, this is, this, this will be a tough one. Um, I do know, uh, currently that, uh, the, uh, the plant out in Dundee, I think, I, you know, I believe they settled over there on, on their, on their, um, IFTs with the, with the new plants at about 34 bucks, $34 a square foot. Currently, right now, we are at 40. But of course, you know, it's an IFT, so we're, you know, we're basically just getting half the mills on that, on that property. So that's, you know, that's a number that's been thrown out there right now. And not, we have not thrown that out. That's something that I found out from the assessor over in Dundee on what they had settled with Chrysler, um, prior to going, you know, uh, you know, with their negotiations. Okay?
No, thank you, John. Appreciate it.
You are welcome.
As far as other questions, I mean, I, I think it's, you know, I think we have great departments. I think we have great employees and great potential. I, I don't know, has, have we, you know, it sounds like there's some opportunity in a couple of departments next year with some changes in retirement, um, or retirements and things to that nature. Have we looked at, um, recently, I think we have in the past, but have we looked at recently, potential shared services with other communities? See what our, you know, see what our, um, our strengths are and, and can we, uh, maybe afford to, uh, work with another community and, uh, for, for some kind of benefit, Mr. Church?
Yes, I, I think that is something that, uh, just given the number of shared services we already have. We have had others in the past that we've explored. One that comes to mind is Consolidated Dispatch with River View. Uh, we tried that. It didn't work as well as we wanted it to. Um, and that's no longer in place, but, uh, when you look at really our, uh, between our library, uh, animal control, uh, things of that nature, we, we have our automatic aid. I would consider a shared service with Brownstone on our fire, um, calls that, uh, we, we have had a number of successes. That doesn't mean that we've stopped looking. Uh, the mayor and I recently had discussions with the mayor and city manager from River View, um, exploring, uh, some other, uh, facilities or efficiencies and cost savings. So, yeah, that's something that we are always, I guess, I have our ear to the ground on, uh, in exploring. Uh, if there are ever any ideas for things we ought to explore or have we considered, uh, please don't hesitate to suggest them, but, bottom line, yeah, we're, we are, to me, anything that makes sense. I think the, the general tone from council in the past is not to consolidate services just for the sake of consolidating services. It's hard to win on every single deal, um, but no, it needs to make sense or at least have an offset that if we come out a little ahead on this one, um, to lose a little on the other, but in, in the end, is it better off than if we didn't have those arrangements? Um, and that's the threshold. Sometimes it's, it's hard to have a win-win where it makes sense for both communities or all communities involved, but, uh, we certainly, uh, look at those opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, you know, uh, Councilman LeFever mentioned earlier going down to four days, I think it was, or, or cutting out, and that Mr. Hogan, uh, mentioned it, that their light on Friday is already with trash. I don't know, is there some bandwidth there to get creative? Maybe, you know, maybe it's not sharing the service there. Maybe it's expanding a desired service. You know, I mean, I, I don't know, I just, you know, I think we always need to continually, and, and not that I don't think we do, but it just, from my perspective, and I sit in the cheap seats, so, um, just, you know, wanna make sure we're, we're evaluating our, our assets and our, our folks and, um, you know, seeing what we can do with the resources we have and, and where we can be, um, you know, have a little opportunity, I guess, so. Moving on to my next question, let's see here. Uh, I do have a question on the DDA. There's a, it looks like there's a project in there for my notes. Prove right, I think there was like a 300 or was it a $700,000 project in for DDA. What, what might that be?
So it's not anything specific. So we capture taxes, um, in the DDA. It's a, um, when they created that, the DDA, whatever the taxable value was for those properties, um, that's a set figure and that's called the base value. And then as that goes up, we get to capture those taxes. We capture the city taxes and, um, county taxes. And we can use that money for whatever, whatever we choose, whatever the board choo-, I guess that a board or a commission? I think it's a commission, pardon. So we have certain things that we have to pay, um, which is listed below. There's some, um, transfers to the, um, general funds, I mean, to the water fund and, um, bond payment, or payments back to the general fund. And then after that, whatever those tech, captured taxes are, we put it into the authority projects and the, um, DDA makes those choices? Or the council suggests them? Is that how you would say that, Scott?
Yes, and just, um, to, just to try to tighten up a little bit of what Karen just said there. I know what she said. I wanna make sure you heard what she meant. We can't spend it on just whatever we want. It, it does have to be consistent with the development plan. It has to be within, uh, before anybody gets too creative of, of how we fill some gaps on some things. It does have to be consistent with the DDA's adopted development plan and consistent within those. There are pretty liberal uses that are permitted for that, though. Uh, examples of, of some recent projects we've done, uh, if you recall, uh, those were on the council at the time, anyway. Uh, when we purchased vacant property that became available, uh, south, uh, west corner of Maple and West Jefferson, the former Cindy Park, Cindy's Party Store site, um, was purchased with DDA Authority Project funding. I believe the, uh, parking lot across the street behind the police and fire station and behind the former Man and Bath Building was paid for with DDA Authority Project Funds. And, uh, we have funding budgeted, or, uh, funds have been budgeted for, uh, the redoing of the, uh, the main entrance into City Hall, uh, to match what has been done on the northwest side of the building. Um, or a similar design.
Yeah, okay. We don't, but we don't have a big project that, just the way I looked at that, I was like, oh, looked like it might be just a big project.
No, no, that is not a, that is not a single item. And, and also, we, uh, we tend to pay for, um, like our, our paver maintenance, uh, that is an, an annual cost. Um, and quite frankly, is getting, reaching the point in, in some areas of, uh, is it worth the maintenance and liability costs? Um, and quite frankly, is getting, reaching the point in, in some areas of, uh, is it worth the maintenance and liability costs? Um, are, are we better off, uh, replacing with concrete? But that is something I know Bill and his staff within engineering have been evaluating or worked on.
Okay, um, good. Um, all right. So I do have a question for Karen. What is, what is our total long-term, um, debt in, in total? So I was looking through and it, it came through like, it looks like we have some in insurance and we have some in capital. Do we have a total, just a lump sum number out there that I didn't see in this or?
Okay, so on page one seventy-nine, there is a total for external loans. So these do not include the D D A loans, which are to the general fund and the, the Rink has loans to the general fund as well. So external is on page one seventy-nine.
Okay.
B O others, eight million dollars, eight point five million.
Okay.
Um, if you go to the, if you go to the next page, which I'm so sorry, this is so small, I can barely read it. That's where the internal loans are listed at the bottom, but Scott sent you guys out a new page today because I, once I read it, I thought it was terrible. So that's another, I'm sorry, even if I could see it, it'd be a little better. Hang on.
No, I see it. I, I, I see it there, but there's not just one lump sum. It, it's, you know, it's ninety million or whatever that.
So in the past, sometimes we have included our MERS liability in there and our, um, O P E B obligations and the police and fire obligations. That is not listed on this page. I just did the external loans there.
Okay.
So if you want me to email you what the O P E B liability is, police and fire?
If you would, Karen, please, I would appreciate that. And then I do have one, I have some other questions, but I'm going to hold off. I think, uh, Karen, you, you saw my email. I think you, you have some.
Yes, I have your answers. Yeah.
So, and I appreciate that, but I do have one other question. Um, as far as, as things are going and projects or potential projects that we had coming down the pipe through, you know, and into the city, have, has our economic development coordinator, his, is he, is he seeing any action, positive or negative based on, um, COVID nineteen and maybe opportunities that, that we're working on for developing, you know, to bringing developments or bringing businesses into Trenton? Uh, Scott, I'm going to pitch it over to you.
Yeah, uh, I think as with everything, uh, yeah, that, that has definitely, uh, that has definitely hit a, uh, a roadblock, uh, the, the inability to have meetings. Uh, but I think quite frankly, uh, the investment appetite for some people right now, given some of the uncertainty, uh, that we've sort of had some things that were in motion that have sort of just hit a pause and, uh, we're hoping, uh, that things normalize and, and and get back to the way they, they were prior to the COVID nineteen in every respect. But as far as opening up, uh, the doors for, for redevelopment or investment opportunities, uh, for a number of projects and sites in town. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Wagner's been working on several of those, uh, but, uh, a handful of them that I've been directly involved with him, I know we're in a holding pattern that we just cannot meet for financing. Uh, things that aren't deemed essential, we just cannot move forward on them now.
Right. All right.
I'm just hoping that there's still a market for some of those opportunities to expand, uh, once they get back to the new normal.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, um, I am, I think, uh, I am going to, uh, yield my time to Mr. Mayor Protim. You can, you can have the mic back.
Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Mr. Perugi.
Mr. Benedetti. Uh, I had reached out to Mr. Church as it related to the MERS contribution where we, we scheduled to pay four million. We have that ironed out to go over a ten-year period of two point five. My concern was I would like to see a bigger chunk of that paid upfront and talking with Karen, uh, there's no penalty in paying off early. So, uh, if we ever have a chance, I, I would like to try to get that relief at the end of that contract instead of trying to redo that contract. So if there's an opportunity to pay more than two point five, I think we should, uh, try to do that. Uh, as budgets always go, it's always a best guess. We're all trying to do the best we possibly can and it's, it's a guess with a lot of moving parts. Um, as it relates to Director Voss, the, the, we'll call it right now hazard pay. It, it, to me, it works as a retainer and a recruitment tool. Um, working out the bugs is another conversation he has to do. That's his job. But I think to try to keep these employees here and show them that we care, I think it's well worth the dollar spent. I know we don't have the, you know, we're, we're looking at shaving money, but if we have any way of doing that, I think it's in our best interest. One thing that people haven't really talked about is with this COVID nineteen, there's policies and procedures that are going to be coming down the road that we don't know the impact of what it's going to cost us. Is our, our police and fire now going to have to, um, do have testing kits for their employees, test them once a month, once a week, once a shift? And we have not even figured out who's paying for those testing kits. So those, those are things that we haven't even delved into this moving contract, uh, contractor budget. And so those, those are things in which could come down the road that we have no clue what it's going to run us. I hope we get state relief, but everybody's been, going to be looking for that. Um, and outside of that, um, I, I, all my questions have been answered. Uh, you guys have all done a good job. Uh, however, I, I would like to defer this to, uh, Mr. Benedetti and see if he would like to take a poll and see if he would be in favor of approving this budget.
Thanks, pal. Actually, I was gonna, that, was gonna do that after everybody got done. So if there are no other questions, do we have anybody? And I know, I don't know some of the names here, so I'm assuming they're not city employees. But I'll start with department heads. If they'd like to comment on their budget at all, let Karen know and she can call on you. I'm sorry, Debbie, no, and she can call on you. Anybody raising their hand, Debbie?
No, I don't see anybody raising their hand. You know what? I'm going to unmute all for a moment just to make sure. Sometimes, um, I've got feedback that people had a hard time finding the hand to raise. So let's just for a second.
Okay, department head, last chance.
Um, Steve Voss has his hand raised.
Okay, can we re mute and then let Steve out? You're getting a ton of feedback. Thank you, Debbie. So go ahead and unmute Steve.
Yeah, my only question was, is, you know, for the last nine years, we've had an opportunity to, to sit, um, you know, with our budget in hand and answer questions. Is that going to be something we're going to need to do this year? That, that would be part of my question, I guess, because otherwise, a little bit, I'm not prepared, but I don't have the material in front of me right now.
Well, Steve, what I was hoping for is, and I'm, uh, because I think that question is directly aimed at me. Um, I figured, look, I am a firm believer in this budget. So to sit and go over it and over it and nitpick it, I, I don't believe that's done. If you honestly gave us the best you can do, there may be things that you wanted, but I can guarantee you, uh, it's not going to happen. I mean, we don't know where it's going to, where it's going to come from. And I think some of those things, like in the past, we have not budgeted for, but later through the year found out that we really needed them and we had a funding mechanism for them. So that is always an opportunity to do that and have a budget amendment made by the controller. But I don't really see, in my opinion, where having you guys sit and do that individually i- is going to play out where it's going to change anything. We don't have a lot of money anymore.
Right, Rick. It, it, Councilman, I was not directing that at, at you or what I was, I guess more of what I was getting at is.
No, and I'm not saying it as a negative, Steve, trust me.
Yeah, what I was getting at is, I mean, yeah, of course, that's what me and the two chiefs did. Um, I just, if anybody had any questions specifically, I'd like to have the material in front of me. I mean, I could speak whole, you know, I could speak wholly, but I can't speak to each line item.
Right.
Without it.
And, you know, granted, they were going to send the questions to Scott, but if it was directed at your department, then Scott would have brought it to you. So that's why I asked the council to review the budget. You've had, we've had them for a week. And I mean, I can look and I know two council people that might, I don't know if one is going to work every day or doing it from home. But I mean, we've all had more than ample time to look at this budget this year than we have in the past.
No, and it is from a department head standpoint, I, I appreciate this. It's a lot, uh, a lot fewer meetings.
Exactly right. We're going to save money one way or the other. It's either going to be in your budget or in our budget. So is there anybody else, uh, Debbie? I always want to call you Karen. I don't know why.
Uh, that's okay. Dean Creach, and then we have, uh, Wendy Pate.
Oh, do we have to let Dean speak? Go ahead, chief.
Uh, yeah, just real quick, there's some of the stuff that's come up, uh, through, through the, the meeting and, and I, I do, I appreciate that council is, uh, keenly aware that we're in a changing world and, and everything. Um, I will tell you that, um, my, my budget is developed, uh, throughout the year. And I, uh, it's, yeah, it was pretty much finalized in February. Um, um, I will summarize it real quickly just to say that, um, every reduction that could have been made, I feel was made and still maintain, uh, a good level or a high level of service. There's only, uh, one capital investment we need to get a cardiac monitor that is in my, uh, budget that was requested. Um, as far as the impact on COVID, um, we, it, it, it will impact us, uh, to a certain degree financially. We are going to run into some more expenses. Um, we are running into them now, I think. And I hope that most of them we will get, um, some reimbursement for. I don't think it's going to be, uh, dreadful or, uh, crazy amount of, of investment or cost. The one thing that we have, um, taken, uh, a reduction in is, um, our EMS revenue. Um, our EMS revenue, I think for next year, we projected, uh, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, now, it, we, we should still, if it was a normal year, we, we would still do the six hundred and thirty. I think that's even probably a little on the conservative side. Um, however, uh, we're transporting, uh, a lot less people the last three to four weeks. Um, we're still responding quite a bit, um, but people are generally electing not to go to the hospital or, or shouldn't be going to the hospital. Um, the federal government, uh, did send us, um, fifteen thousand dollars, um, as part of our Medicare, it is part of the stimulus package that has probably ma- made up, um, any, uh, uh, any lost revenue that we've had thus far. But going forward, we will have, uh, a certain, uh, decrease in the number of transports. But I, I have no idea where it's going to land. Um, my, I, I would still, if I was asked for, uh, asked to update it, I would still tell you, we're probably going to be around six hundred thousand. It, it could be ten percent less. It could be, uh, it could be ten percent more. Um, but we just don't know where it, it's going to land. And, and honestly, we're not going to know thirty days from now either, at least from, from my budget. Um, it's not going to change in the next, uh, thirty days that we're going to have that, that bit of, uh, extra knowledge. So anyways, I just wanted to give you, uh, as far as the impact with COVID and everything else, um, we're, we're doing well. Everybody's coming to work. They're doing a great job. Very proud of them. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I appreciate the budget that was, uh, sent through the mayor's office. And, and I think it's, uh, for the fire department perspective, it's, it's a solid budget. And, um, even with everything going on, I, I, I think those are going to be workable, manageable numbers.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Anybody else, Debbie?
Yep. Rick, I believe Wendy is next. And then after Wendy, we have the mayor and then councilwoman, or, um, Scott Cabewattan and then also Joanne Gagne.
Okay, Wendy.
Okay, so, um, what I wanted to add is that, you know, I did start out my questions with the, you know, the question about revenue. And I think that tick list that, um, Karen mentioned is going to be absolutely important that we keep those discussions open. But when I went through the budget with my questions, I went through it pretty much as if things were going to remain at least the same. And if I didn't have a question for police and fire, that didn't mean that I didn't respect their budget or, you know, cared for them any less. Uh, I just didn't see anything that threw up any flags and I respect their, um, expertise and think they did a, a good job with their budget. So that would also be true for any other department if I didn't ask, you know, about that specifically. I don't want them to think that I, you know, um, didn't think of them as highly as anybody else. It's just, I think you did a great job in what you had to work with and I, I just didn't have any questions. Uh, the other thing too is that, you know, um, it's to address what Bill had said, you know, all, all I hear, because Bill had made the comment after my questions and said something about, all I hear is, you know, increase, increase, increase. But, um, at the same time, anything that I brought up probably is going to be one of those things on the tick list. And one of the things I brought up was just switching numbers around, um, from one commission to another perhaps as an idea. Um, the only increase I saw was maybe the, uh, technology budget. But at the same time, I think we have that money available and, um, um, we also took, you know, eighteen thousand dollars off for the fireworks. So, you know, we, you know, just, just that small example, when we say, oh, we've been spending and spending, well, you have to consider, well, maybe we only asked for nine thousand dollars. We cut eighteen from the fireworks. So, yeah, I, I want to ask for money here and there and move things around a little bit just because it makes more sense. It doesn't mean because, um, you know, it's just a frill or frivolous thing that, that I was looking for. And I, you know, again, of course, if I didn't ask a question from another department, it didn't mean that I thought any less of them and what they were working with. So I just wanted to make that clear. And, um, I actually had, uh, two other things. One was I actually skipped the emergency management budget, which really doesn't have a lot at this point. It looks like it's pretty much just a salary expense on page ninety-one, if anyone wants to look at that. But, um, I'm just wondering if, um, that person, of course, is, uh, Paul Haley. Is he getting compensated enough for what he is doing and may have to do in the future? And, um, does he need anything? Did he have any suggestions for his department, specifically Department four twenty-six? Um, or is that just going to be kind of funneled throughout the rest of the budget here and there as we see what comes in and what goes out?
Um, Wendy, part of his, the lines in his budget were moved to the police department?
Right.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
That, that's all I wanted to say about that part because that's the only thing.
I saw that. I just wasn't sure if, you know, I, I wasn't sure the last time he was, his compensation was looked at. He's obviously probably working ten times more than he has. And maybe that's something we talk about with hazard pay, which again, I didn't think we were allowed to talk about at this meeting. But, um, uh, you know, just maybe a consideration for him and what he's dealing with, uh, was another department that I forgot to mention earlier. Um, and then the other thing I'd like to say about what we do moving forward, you know, there could be a lot of people who also are looking to, and this is a terrible thing, but there's a lot of property downtown that needs to be snatched up. We had a lot of vacancies just in January and February before COVID. Um, so I think it is important that we do invest some of. Um, so I think it is important that we do invest some of maybe the DDA money or look for some grants. I mean, EDC has a grant. I talked with Stephen and Scott about this. Things we can do to make our city look inviting. That includes the, I agree, we have to talk with the West Road businesses as well to see what could help them. And Timber mentioned having the cultural center as their anchor. Um, but we've got to do something that when business does come back, they want to come back here and not somewhere else. And so I, I think it is important if there are some funds available at the end, or if we start looking at grants, that we do invest in our growth as well, because we want them to pick Trenton to do their business in. So I think that's important to remember as well. That's all I needed to say.
Okay, thank you. And let, you know, and I know somebody's next, but please give me this minute is, you're right, Wendy, and I agree with you. To make every department head sit and plead their case, I mean, they made a budget. We pay them to run their department. If they really, really think that's something they needed, they can tell us. And we've had a couple speak to their needs and a couple speak to their budget, and I'm good with that. So I want to say, I think Scott was next, and then Joanne. Am I correct?
Actually, the mayor would be next.
Oh, oh, sorry, Stephen. Forgot you were even here tonight.
That's all right. I'm fine with that. I, I enjoy being on mute the whole time and just observing. Um, so mine wasn't necessarily a question. It was just sort of a, a couple of comments and, and sort of summaries of this is that, I mean, it's been brought up and beaten up for, you know, these last two plus hours here. Um, and, you know, Tim, Timber, you brought it up quite a bit at the beginning here, um, that, you know, our revenue and what's going to happen because of this, it's just a giant question mark. Um, this budget was, we started preparation of this in February, um, and it's early March, and it was pretty much all done by the time this outbreak started. Um, we actually, in fact, had some of our, uh, meetings, actually, it was with Bill Hogan, I don't remember which of the departments. Um, in the evening, they were scheduled for when we had to have our emergency department head meeting to talk about how the hell we were going to handle all this. Um, so this was sort of done before this, and I know that, uh, you know, we don't have those numbers. Uh, Karen had mentioned it earlier, of, you know, what the, you know, the state not being sure what this was going to look like yet. And I'm going to be honest, I don't expect them by the time, to have those hard numbers by the time that we have to pass, pass this budget either. Um, the state doesn't know at this point, uh, what they're looking at. They think that it might be $3, $4 billion from them that they're going to lose, um, but they don't know. Um, and that's the thing is, is, you know, we're in the, it's not just a Trenton issue right now. There's thousands of other communities in Michigan. There are 50 states in the United States that are all facing the same thing right now that we are. Um, and, you know, it's just the absolute worst timing that could have possibly be budgetarily. Um, but at the same time, by our charter, we still have to have this done by our second meeting in May here. Um, you know, as I had mentioned in my presentation, uh, last week, um, you know, this isn't going to be some sort of science seal delivered, we put it down or done with, aren't thinking about it anymore. That this is a, uh, as much as I hate this phrase often, a living green document that's going to be reevaluated constantly. Um, you know, whether it be, uh, you know, staffing and utilization, I touched on, there are going to be, you know, positions that aren't filled the same way that they were. Um, do I want to go into depth about that right now? No. Um, and I don't want it to, anyone to think that they're going to get, you know, forced out, that, you know, someone's got a target on their back or anything like that. Um, but no, there's no way, shape or form that this is going to continue in the exact, that it always has, that is going to continue to be evaluated every time the potential for a vacancy comes up, and that will bring about savings. Um, even, uh, just, even if we did replace everyone that retired one by one with new people, that would in and of itself would bring about savings, just because we're hiring people and at entry level rates now. Um, but like I said, that's not going to be the case. It's going to be a lot of reorganizing opportunities for us. And that's something we're going to continue to look at no matter what here. The same goes, uh, you know, as Scott had mentioned too, about, uh, different shared services and things like that. Um, that, yeah, I think that that's great, and we do need to continue to look for those opportunities. Um, but that is a conversation that can continue year round. It doesn't have to just be based on an individual budget. That, that, you know, if someone has an idea in September or December, those are things that frankly makes it easier to start looking at around those types of, uh, those times, because we can have the opportunity to incorporate those numbers, to do the research, to explore the feasibility of these things, um, and, uh, to continue to look at that. So I'm certainly all ears on any of those fronts. Especially too, you know, that, uh, right, like I said, this doesn't have to be something that, that's done now. These can be conversations we continue to have. Um, and from that same token, that I want that are not in this budget. Um, you know, I, I, it's almost a shame to say that this is the mayor's proposed budget, because, you know, Timber had mentioned it before too, and Wendy as well, the aesthetics portion, um, that's not included in here. Someone were bringing that up to put it in, I would be a yes vote for that. Um, but I felt the responsibility to, you know, bring a budget to you all with the, you know, lowest amount of fund balance used. I can possibly imagine that, uh, you know, I would say is pretty lean, um, doesn't have a lot of opportunities for wholesale cuts um, outside of just straight up eliminating, you know, major circuits. And if anyone, um, you know, like I said, if, if there are things there that people brought forth, I'm, I'm in. I, I am certainly open to this, you know, this document is not my like magnum opus that I'm going to like look at winning a Nobel Prize for literature here or anything like that, that I am dead set and wed to. Um, you know, I am all ears on this, and I, I just, I want those concrete ideas. That's how we do this, is as a group. And, you know, I'm certainly, um, you know, open to any of those suggestions that anyone has. But from that same token, I mean, I think outside of Councilman LaFever's point about, uh, you know, the, uh, one additional police officer is that I haven't really heard anything concrete that we can apply to this budget right now here. Um, and that, uh, you know, I, I'm certainly open to all of them, but, but we need to hear them. And so, you know, if there are ideas of what we should do different, um, I'm certainly all ears. And I'm sure that, you know, I feel comfortable saying that for the rest of council too, and administration, that if there's, you know, a fresh set of eyes looking at something that hasn't, um, or just, you know, a different way of doing business for us, let's look at it. I have no qualms about that. I am, you know, not territorial about this. I don't feel like this is the end all be all, that, you know, I'd be super offended if this didn't go my way. That's, that's fine. I'm, I'm open to any of these ideas that anyone has, but we need concrete ideas. We spent a lot of time today talking about probably $10,000 out of a $21 million budget here in the grand scheme of things. We need to, you know, if there's going to be a wholesale change, let's, let's do it. Let's talk about it. They need to hear those ideas. So I, I appreciate the input here. Um, but at the end of the day, you know, this is something that even with all the unknowns and the horrible things going on in our world, that we have to have done by the second weekend, or second meeting in May. I wish it's the second weekend. It's, what are weekends anymore? By the second meeting in May. And, uh, you know, I, I certainly appreciate and welcome all input, but, um, need some solutions too, from that same token. So I, I just wanted to kind of reiterate that, that any and all ideas, I am absolutely all ears. But if we don't get them incorporated in this budget here, uh, you know, when we do pass it, when that time does come, that's okay. The, just bring it up in two, three months. If you have an idea, the light bulb goes off, clicks, keeps you up at night then. I'm absolutely all ears, and we can continue those conversations at any given point. So I just wanted to make that known. I know I haven't said much today, and I've kind of enjoyed that. But, uh, just wanted to reiterate that, and I do again, thank you all, and I appreciate very much your input.
Hello? Is anybody there?
Rick, you need to unmute yourself.
Yeah, sorry. I just saw that. Um, who was next? Scott or Joanne?
Yep, next is Scott Cabewattan.
I, and I just have a quick question, um, for Mr. Hogan. It looks like in, on page 138, it looks like there was a pole barn for the DPS vehicle storage and equipment, um, for 2019, 2020. Did we, did we enact in that, or is that still, and it doesn't look like it's budgeted for this year? Is that something that we are building? We, we did build, we didn't build, or where do we stand on that project?
Yeah, Scott, that was to be funded through the water department, water facility. It didn't get off the ground, uh, as soon as, so right now it's only in design phase, and that's why it's shown as a carryover.
Okay, but it doesn't look like it's in the 2021 recommended by the mayor. Right? Correct? So it's...
That, that's because it was, it was included in last year's, the present budget.
Okay, okay, Bill. So, okay, I get you now. It's going to carry over. All right. And that's just, is that a replacement building, or is that just for expanded storage?
A little of both. We used to, you, you used to utilize the water building down on King Road in Jefferson, just east of Jefferson. And, uh, when that building was closed, uh, we moved all our equipment and, um, and, um, parts to the DPS. So it needs to have its own building to, um, contain not only the equipment, but also the vehicles.
Yeah, so is this, so this is a little bit more than probably a cold storage then? Am I assuming that?
No, pretty mu, no.
Is it cold storage? Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. They'll have a concrete floor and everything?
Yes.
Cold storage, okay. All right. No, that's, that's the only question I have.
Joanne, I think was next, right?
Um, I just wanted to give the council just a bit of an update of where our department is at the moment. Um, obviously, we're working real hard to try to, um, make sense of all this. Um, a lot of things are kind of in a folding pattern right now. Um, I, I will let you know that we have delayed the printing of the Buzz magazine. Um, we felt that that was prudent to do, um, based on getting a bit more direction, uh, from what the governor is going to be doing and, and when we can start, um, you know, opening up, back up and what that will look like. Um, so just, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up in case somebody asks, I didn't get my Buzz magazine. Well, it is going to be delayed. Um, uh, we're hoping to, you know, again, in the next couple of weeks, to, to, things will, will become more clear, um, as to the direction that we can go. Um, but we are looking at creative ways to engage our community currently, and then also in the future as well, because we do know that things might look a little bit different. Um, but we're working real hard to, um, you know, to, uh, to determine the best, the best way to, to move forward. Um, we are on, um, almost daily, uh, different webinars and, um, conversations from, uh, uh, other parks and recreation, uh, leaders throughout this, the country, uh, not just our state. So, um, just so they know that we're on top of things, and we are doing, um, again, working real hard to make sure that we can, um, make the best, um, re-engagement with our community as possible.
Okay. Joanne, I do have a question for you.
Yep.
So I know it's something we don't want to ever think about, but, so is there a point in time or what is, because it's come up? So I guess I'll put this out there now, so maybe Monday, it could be answered publicly. What is or what would be a cutoff date for the Midsummer Festival? I know nobody wants to talk about that, but when do we have to start being concerned about expenditures that we can't get back? Or things like that? Because, I mean, like I said, if it's, you know, oh, you can't have a crowd of more than 50, well, that really dampens out on a Friday night when you get a good band playing down there.
Well, uh, thanks for bringing that up, Rick. Um, I will let you know that, um, the festival committee did meet about a week and a half ago. And, um, uh, they had a, a real good conversation, dialogue regarding this year's festival. It was the, um, uh, the decision of the festival to reconvene, um, in May 1st, um, after this, uh, stay at home order is, um, hopefully, uh, going to be lightened up, or at least at that point, we'd have more. That's really great, Scott. Like your picture. Um, we have more, um, more interaction or more information of where, where we need to go. So after the committee meets, uh, May 1st, I think, I'm hoping that we'll have a lot more information at that point to make a decision one way or the other. I will say that we currently have about, um, as far as entertainment contracts, about $4,800 that we are at this point committed to. However, I do, and, um, if, if we were to have to, um, get out of those contracts, I, I'm confident, um, somewhat confident that, that we would not lose all of that money. Uh, we also have, um, you know, sound and lighting and staging contracts that have already been signed. Um, most of those, though, I think, um, there's a, uh, I don't see any kind of, uh, cancellation clause in there, um, where we would not get, um, a, a refund. So, um, but again, there's, there's additional monthly expenses and things. We, we did, did some electrical, uh, work, um, off-season this year, so those expenses have already been paid. But, uh, as far as, to answer your question, I think May 1st, um, the committee will reconvene and, and talk about where we're at and, uh, what the future is going to look like in June, and make their decision.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Debbie, is there anybody else?
Rick?
Yes, Bill?
I was trying to ask Joanne a couple of questions.
Sure!
Joanne, at the last thing we had, I thought you were sure that we hadn't spent any money yet on the festival. And second of all, are we the only person downriver that's having a festival this year?
So, um, I have not heard of any, um, festivals in our immediate area that have, um, pulled the plug. I know that, um, Scott Church has been in, in contact with a number of the communities, um, surrounding us. Um, I think all of them have had conversations similar to what we have had. But at this point, I don't think that anyone has actually pulled the plug and said, no, we're not going to do it. Um, I, the, the most, um, Levonia Spree, um, which is actually the same weekend as the Trenton Summer Festival, um, did cancel their festival a couple of weeks ago. Um, and there's some of the larger events statewide that have been canceled.
What about Wyandotte?
Wyandotte has not officially canceled, um, their events.
I will, uh,
I understand.
Just as a, it's a quick, but sorry, both Bill and Joanne, but, uh, no, Peter Peterson did call me, uh, just in the last couple of days, that they, they haven't formally done so yet, but they will be canceling theirs. That's what I thought.
That's right. And I think that that's what, nobody has actually formally, um, publicly announced that. And so that's, that's kind of, again, um, there was, I think, the desire of the festival committee to, um, that there wasn't a, a need to, uh, pull the plug, yes, uh, you know, right away. And that's why they wanted to, we'll have more information May 1st. Um, we think, um, when the, um, this, this current stay at home order is, um, is over, um, and see what, what the next, you know, what the next phase will be. Um, so that's kind of what the committee was working on.
My only concern was that we've got a lot of vendors that paid money, and we aren't going to have it. If we can give the money back to them, it'll be beneficial.
Yeah. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry to interrupt, but, um, so, um, we have yet to cash any of the checks for all of our crafter. Uh, we did send them an email letting them know that they, we would be holding on to their payment until, um, May 1st. Um, and at that point, um, so, um, and any, anything that, that obviously, uh, was deposited from a sponsorship standpoint or something like that, if we were to cancel, we'd certainly, um, issue that refund.
And the food vendors also, Joanne?
Yeah, the food vendors, they have yet to be, um, uh, deposited either. So none of the vendors have been deposited.
Great, thank you.
So we have just the signed contracts. Um, but again, that, um, the expense, we haven't, um, expended the $4,800. Um, we have signed contracts for those. Uh, so that's where we're at. And we have not, um, we held off, um, uh, on the major entertainment, which would, you know, be a, a big chunk of change.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Debbie, is there anybody else?
No, I do not believe anybody else.
Rick? Yes, Bill. Yes, Bill.
Being that it has to be a second meeting in May, I think we have quite a bit to discuss. Would you consider moving the, uh, meeting back in May, so we give us more time?
Yeah, we can do that. I mean, you know, we do it every other time. We can make it, um, you're going to, you're going to make me look at my calendar, aren't you, Bill?
Oh, you, but you, better you than me.
Would you be looking at making that the, the Tuesday following Memorial Day then? The 20, uh,
26th?
Actually, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that, because normally it would be on the 18th. So, yeah, we always make it there. And if we have come to a conclusion, we can always move it back, right? What do we got to give? A 24-hour notice? How does that work, Debbie?
Um, okay, so right now, we scheduled our public hearing regarding the budget for May 18th. If you would like at the next council meeting, we can, um, make an agenda item to change that public hearing and also the council meeting, and move it to Tuesday, the 26th.
Okay, so move the whole thing?
Yeah.
Stephen, are you okay with that?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, that's, uh, that's the will.
We normally do that. We normally do that.
Okay, and there's no objection from any other council members?
No, I just have a question, Rick.
Okay, okay, I will get you, I promise. Timber, let me get through this one, okay?
Well, this is about this.
Okay, go ahead, then.
I just, how many more budget meetings are you going to have?
I don't know yet. We're gonna talk about this right now, but let's get this out of the way first.
They're a lot easier in person, easier in person.
Yeah, well, and I say, I sure don't think we're gonna get that chance. Not unless you can put it out in the middle of the parking lot. Because I don't, I, I, I mean, I don't know, maybe, maybe you guys have a crystal ball or something, but I just don't see, you know, and it gotta be a public meeting, so we can't limit them to just us. So I really, I mean, that's gonna be hard pressed to try doing someplace like that. So everybody's in agreement to go and move the meeting from the eighteenth to the twenty-sixth, correct? I saw a bunch of shaking heads. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, well, everybody's but Timbers and Bills, because you turned your video off.
I don't have them, Bill.
Okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna change that one, Debbie. So Timber, did you have anything else? I'll start with you.
Uh, nope, I'm all set.
Okay. And let's see, if I go the other way, Nelson, you'd be next.
I have nothing else to add.
Scott?
The only thing I'd add is that, you know, my hat's off to the department heads, yourself, mayor, uh, you know, administration, everybody that's worked on this. This was, and, and I'd say, this was, and it is still, it's, it's a good budget, it's just, from my perspective, there's just that sense of unknown, and, and I'm not gonna beat it up any more than that. There's a few questions I think that we probably need to get comfortable with um and go from there, but um, but no, great job to everybody involved um and for going through this, because it's not easy. And especially in, in this time where we're all virtual um figures on a, on a screen. So um, again, thank you very much, and it's uh, it's been a, a pleasure to be part of this process.
Bill?
Yeah, I talked to a couple of things to you directly and to the mayor directly, and the next meeting likely would address those issues with the rest of the council, that was okay with you too.
That's fine.
Okay. Steve, that okay with you?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no, like I said, literally, nothing off the table, and even if anyone's got the craziest of ideas in the world, I'm all ears.
Hey, don't say crazy.
So Bill, I'm not talking about this one in particular, but I'm sure we could all come up with something outside the box.
I know, I know, yeah, okay.
So Bill, Bill, my question for you then is, so then, that, if it's a question you asked me, then we probably need to have Mr. Hogan available also?
Yeah, I, I would talk to both of them prior to the next meeting, so they, they're aware of it ahead of time, okay, Rick? You know?
Okay. Yep. I'm sure Stephen can handle that. Okay, Wendy, you started first, so you get to be last. You're on a time, you're on a time limit, though.
Uh-oh, I have nothing further to say, I said enough right now, so thank you for all your help, everybody, with answering all our questions, I appreciate it.
So I know I'd be out of line not to ask the question, so I'm gonna start with me. I think I could approve this budget today. There are questions that we don't have answered, but I don't think by the end of May, anybody's gonna really be able to answer them for me. So then I would go with mine would be a yes if we were voting today, and then Scott, I'll go to you. Scott?
Yeah, as I mute, I'm sorry. No offense, Rick, but I just don't feel comfortable at this point.
Okay, and that's fine, that's fine. And you raised some good questions, I just don't know if we're gonna have those answers by then.
And we may not, but, but yeah, with all due respect, and again, my hat's off to everybody, but just, I don't feel, i- it, it's not a lack of confidence on, on anybody's behalf, it's more, you know, if we can get some, a couple more answers, I'd sleep a little bit better at night, so.
Okay. Nelson?
I'd be a yes on the budget if we're voting today.
Wendy?
I support it, um, just, I suppose, just, you know, like I said, just it's all those little details, but overall, I am, i- it looks great to me.
Even.
I was, I, I didn't know if you were gonna ask, but uh, you know, this is my seventh budget. Four with uh Bill running it and two with Timber running it, and uh we'd always done these trouble, so I was excited for this part of it. Yeah, certainly, no, no offense taken uh from anyone uh for no's here, uh, I'm actually just mostly thrilled that after one meeting, I, there's been more than one yes, and it's not just me. I would certainly be a yes on this, I'm obviously uh, you know, all ears for uh, you know, future uh conversation, ideas, things like, things of that nature. Um, and, you know, like I had referenced a little bit earlier too, there's definitely things that I would have preferred to put in this budget that I didn't uh for that token. So, you know, looking forward to con- continuing the conversation with all of you. I mean, it certainly sucks that this has to be while we're sitting on our computers, I much, much, much prefer one hundred times out of a hundred to do it in person, but gotta make do with uh times we could never possibly, possibly even fathom. So uh, yes, long and the short of it, I'm a yes.
Okay. Bill?
Uh, no, I'm a no.
Okay, and Timber?
I'm a half yes, half no. I'm, I'm ninety percent, I'm ninety percent in favor of a lot that's gone on, but there's still some issues, and I'd like to see us put uh at least ten thousand dollars into this budget for aesthetics. Like, as always, for the town that's not attractive, is not attractive to anybody to move here or to open a business here. So I, I do want to see some more money put in for aesthetics, as I usually do every year now, and uh, believe me, we went through that money, and we still didn't have enough. So I, we've put fifty thousand in before, but I settled for at least ten thousand, so the commissions can do what they need to do, like Wendy had said, um, and give them the money they need to make this town look good. You can't expect anybody to make the town look good with no, without money. Other than that, uh, few little minor details, but I'm sure we'll discuss them, but uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not one hundred percent there to vote yes, not yet.
Okay. Well, I'm a yes on Councilwoman Bonkirk's uh ten thousand dollar proposal there.
Thank you.
Well, then, Ms. Saul, will you add that to the list?
I sure will.
Thank you. So with that being said, now, I know we all have some tight schedules, but at least nobody's gonna be on vacation this year. So. I really don't want to do one after the council meeting Monday.
Speak for yourself.
Well, some of us have jobs still.
Most of us don't.
Would Thursday work for you guys?
Fine for me.
The twenty-third?
Can you repeat that, I didn't hear you.
Would the twenty-third work this Thursday?
Uh, should.
Yeah. What are you looking at, Nelson, your calendar?
Probably looking at the NFL draft.
Yeah, there's the drafts at night, so, yeah, but um, yeah, I could uh, I'll make the meeting.
DVR it, buddy.
The Lions Fan Super Bowl.
I can't, I gotta.
I'm glad two others did, so.
I'll just have it in the background playing.
Hey, you, I, I mean, I'll make it Wednesday if that's what you guys wanna do.
Thursday's good.
I mean, I'm, I might, you know, I watch the Lions, the draft really doesn't matter to us, it doesn't make it any better. So.
It's all we got.
That's uh, so the uh, like, that Thursday's fine with me and everything like that, I just want to confirm that for all of council and for all the department heads for that matter, that that is enough time for a turnaround, just on any questions that anyone may have or anything like that too. So it, I, not to cut you off, Rick, but just to make sure.
You're fine.
Don't have any kind of objections or that, you know, no one from council needs any additional time other than that.
And Bill LaFever, you did send your concerns to Stephen so he could talk to Mr. Hogan?
I, I discussed him and unfoundedly discussed it with him.
Okay, so Stephen, you're up to speed on what he's looking for?
Yeah, 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 absolutely, and I, I think that that's something that uh, right, I mean, I guess, you know, Bill, you're Hogan, you're on right now, so as long as you're able to make it Thursday, it's uh to have that discussion. Just related to commercial trash and things of that nature.
I'm available.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
So with that, is there any other department head that we're requesting to be there? I mean, I know some of them are gonna watch just because that's what they do, and I give them credit for that, to always be watching what we do, because we watch them. But is there any other specific department head that needs to be available to answer questions? And I'm not.
Hey, Rick?
Yes, ma'am.
Timber?
Yep.
Just uh, could I, Karen, check out the water rates, and are we gonna have any increase from Detroit for the water rates at all?
Okay. So.
Page one forty-seven, I think.
Yeah, and there's a letter from um, so, there's a letter from Plant Moran on one forty-eight, which is a change in the way the water rates are, and on page one fifty, there's a water rate of twelve oh seven, which is a small increase.
Right. Okay, I just didn't wanna, you know, overrate the water rates or, you know, whatever, we can't lose money, but I don't wanna, you know.
Yeah, um, the, the letter kind of explains the plan and what we're, what um, the SAW grant was meant for. And so this is part of that study, so um, and if you want, you can give me a call, or Bill Hogan, yeah, and again, Bill Hogan will be available that day as well, so we can both talk about that.
Right, that'll fall under him, that falls under him and Karen, so, okay.
Mayor?
Okay.
Or Rick?
Yeah, Bill, go.
I wonder if there's been any uh conversation between the mayor and uh Crown and Crown uh manufacturing down there about uh what they're gonna do, and they're gonna ask the council for any city money?
Yeah, it's that, um, no, I haven't been ha- asked that or inquired about that or had any of those discussions. I mean, we had, we talked uh maybe two weeks ago or so, but it was just about the, what was being halted in terms of remediation, cleanup and type stuff, but they're actually, should be getting back, n- not totally back to work, but there are some things on the property they are able to do that um related to the environmental uh piece of it, to make sure that it doesn't get worse. But no, they, they haven't indicated in any way, shape or form that they'd be asking the city for money.
Okay, and the same goes for the uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars we had coming from the county. Have we moved forward with that at all, and got that money, we can spend that on some projects in Trenton?
Page two.
So unfortunately, uh, no, yet, I have not uh heard anything about that, I had inquired, uh, I don't know how many months ago it was, uh, related particularly to the fire truck, um, where they said that that wouldn't have been feasible with it is, uh, with it as it was, and then, you know, all these things happened over the last six weeks or so. But that's something that I'm gonna have on my to-do list to reach out to the county directly about again, too.
They certainly aren't trying to uh get out of their obligation, are they?
That didn't sound like it, and the cat, you know, I, I'm not going to speak for them in any form, um, but I didn't get that sense, at least from our conversation, now that they, they were certainly, you know, open to talking about it, um, but nothing that made me think that they, they weren't going to put it forth.
Hey, Stephen?
Mm-hmm.
Could I just say something about that?
Sure.
Wasn't that just a fifty thousand dollar increment, and uh wasn't it up to the mayor to pick where that money went? And, and she had to address it with the county? Do you know about that?
So, to be honest with you, uh, to that extent, no, I, I don't, just because I know that that, right, that happened, happened, had happened with Kyle, um, and I, I don't know how exactly the conversations went, um, but so I, I'm not sure, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Scott, um, if there's any.
Yes.
Plug into, fill in those gaps or anything like that, but I have not uh had any conversations with the county personally, directly related to that, no.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, yes, the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars are in four um, four payments of sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars each. Each come within X number of days after certain bench- benchmarks. The final version of the uh purchase agreement between uh Crown and Wayne County, we are not a signatory on that agreement. This is an agreement between Crown and the county. The language that was in the final agreement is it would go to, I believe it, with Trenton, um, to be mutually agreed upon by the county executive and the mayor of Trenton. But it is, uh, is my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, mayor, but my understanding is, uh, I believe there was some uh outreach to the county about can that money come to the city instead of to a non- uh, a nonprofit within our community? And from the county's standpoint, um, they said they could not agree to that, uh, because it'd be giving money directly to a community, um, which uh would be a whole nother issue than what was approved by, by the county commission. Just to clarify something the mayor answered, um, to make sure that nobody misunderstood it. I don't believe there's been any hesitation whatsoever from Crown as far as paying it. Any hesitation has been from uh trying to have that fund, those funds redirected from a nonprofit to the city of Trenton, being the recipient of those funds, is that correct, mayor?
Yes, sorry, yeah, that, that actually is a very good summation of what I was trying to say, that, yeah, no, Crown is in no way, shape or form have I gotten any sort of impression that they're trying not to put.
No.
The only conversations I'd had were with the county about allocating it.
I, I mean, we've got some baseball fields that are in terrible shape for the winter, you know, and some of that money was sure about getting the baseball fields in better shape.
Yep, right, Bill.
Stephen?
Hey, Stephen? Go ahead.
I'm having my hand up.
So I'm.
Oh, I don't have a hand up.
People or whatever it may be, but, okay, and Timber, if it was related to your same question.
Well, no, I just, I just wanted to say that what we were told when we were, you know, went along with this, and we knew we were gonna get the two hundred and fifty dollars Philanthropic donation from Crown, we were never told by Khalil Rahal that that money had to go through the county for approval with the executive and all that.
That's correct.
We were a little misled, we were sitting right there, Bill LaFever and I, when we were told in the session with Khalil, that that money was up to the discretion of the city council.
That's correct.
Not of the county executive, not of the mayor, it was directly coming to us, and we would decide in our town where that money should go.
That's correct.
Now, this is right, though?
That's absolutely, one hundred percent.
Right, so, I didn't, I, 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 I didn't forget that, and, and then when Kyle, you know, was still alive and this all came to fruition, she was a little, you know, kind of misled, that it was, had to go between the county exec- executive and her only. It wasn't gonna be a council decision, and that would have to be to nonprofit, like the River Keepers and DIPAC and all this other stuff, which was not what we were told when we approved this agreement.
We put that in the agreement, we, we put that in the county.
We put that in the.
City council.
Right, Bill. Absolutely right. So I think there's a little uh, Stephen, for you, I think there's a little margin of uh error to try to fight for what was approved, and that, you know, why should the Wayne County Executive know or deal with what we need in our community when that money was coming from Crown? So, I mean, you might even have a, a, an argument here, because that was part of our agreement. We're right there.
And I do appreciate that, and um, you know, as soon as I.
You know you've got some leverage.
Yeah, no, and as soon as I do have uh some kind of frame of reference on that, I'm sorry, that, that is unfortunately one of the things that have uh, just, you know, sort of been on the back burner a little bit more, so, um, but in, you know, not that, but that is something that I am going to want the input of council on too, um, in terms of how that money is, gets allocated and things like that. So, you know, uh, between, you know, Bill bringing up the baseball fields, um, and Timber, you've had a bunch of ideas around that too, um, that, you know, that's something that I think uh should be a group decision for that matter too, even if.
Well, I think.
They wanna frame it as saying that who's the choice, it is that, you know, we'll, we'll make sure that, that we get our say, that's for sure.
Well, we, not, I want you to have your say, for sure, I mean, I just want him to not reneg on what he said. And I, I want Crown to be aware that, you know. And I I want Crown to be aware that, you know, that was the way it was, too.
Crown's worth.
Yeah, Crown has any hesitations about that.
I, I'm sorry, I've had my hand up. Can I chime in?
Let, in one second.
Okay.
So you know, when we set these meetings up, there has to be a time limit to them.
I have a quick, I have the actual purchase agreement in front of me right now. If you want me to read it.
Sure, shoot.
It's section 1.08, which is on almost the first page. Philanthropic contribution shall mean payments of $62,500 and zero cents to a nonprofit organization jointly selected by the Wayne County Executive and the city of Trenton mayor within 30 days of each of the following phase two milestones. We are not in phase two. We are in phase one, just so you know. Phase two doesn't start, I think it was supposed to be two years later from the beginning of phase one. So anyway, site plan approval, securing of all necessary permits to complete phase two, a certificate of occupancy for the project, and securing a tenant for the property consistent with the property description. So there's quite a bit that has to happen before that money is even gonna reach us. And if you want a copy of that, I can send it to everybody. But my also question on that as well is have they is there a force majeure being put forth on this property because of the delay? So I know they did have a two-year time limit for phase one, which is most likely, I would think, extended. So then, you know, you might want to find out how much that extends the rest of this phase two project as well and when these timelines have to be done, get that clarified. But I would assume that they would use that force majeure clause to say, hey, we were delayed two months. We're gonna have to extend phase one for two months or however long it's gonna take to get back up to production and, you know, work with the county on those timelines a little bit, too.
Well, Crown is willing to pay the money. It's not, Crown wants to pay the money as soon as possible. That's their interpretation. It's the county.
Now, if they want it technically, so.
It's the county causing problems, okay?
Right, they, yeah, that's crazy. That's not what we were told.
I mean, we're so far off from getting that money right now, though, so I, I mean, you can talk about it in advance, but it's not even close to being a deadline to give us that money.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
Well, it's us phase two. We're only in phase one.
Know what? That's that's papers. It's not what I agree to or Timber agreed to.
I understand that, but it's in the purchase agreement, so.
They were put together afterwards. A lot of stuff was done afterwards, okay? I know the intent and and Crown knows the intent, what they want to do. We made the motion, the county made the motion. Timber and I were part of it. We made a motion, what we want was very self-explanatory.
Oh, you made the motion to give up the property. That that's all we actually did, though.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay. So Stephen, you're gonna look into and find out what's going on with the money from the county from Crown for the property, correct?
Yes.
And you have Mr. Ackerman to help you with because you have a legal document there that she just read off of.
Oh, we don't want, don't worry about the document. We made an agreement.
Bill, Bill, you could shake my hand and tell me you believe something, but unless it's in writing, nobody's gonna believe it.
We never saw.
Is that correct, Mr. Ackerman? Just shake your head.
Listen.
Okay, Bill, I understand what you're saying.
I believe they're a man of the word, okay? When you're a man of words, they made the agreement, they will live up to it.
Bill, Crown.
That's foolish, foolishness.
Crown, Crown, I believe Crown is going to hold up their end of the deal. The problem is, there's a party in the middle called the county, and we all know how that went with the taxes. So we will leave it at that, and Stephen and Scott are gonna have to do what we pay them to do and look into it. Correct? Okay.
You guys get paid.
Oh.
So we're gonna do seven o'clock on Thursday then, correct?
Yep.
Ms. Devitt will send out all the invitations again, and hopefully I'll respond to it before 6:45. Is there anything else?
Done.
So do we have to do a roll call to adjourn this one?
No.
No, I, I, Rick, I do believe since this is a public meeting, you do have to offer or ask if anyone has any public comment they want to offer.
Okay, well, I hate to do that to him now, but is there any public comment we have? Debbie, anybody?
Okay, no hands are raised and everybody is unmuted.
Okay, well, then Debbie, I guess, hopefully on Thursday, we can do it at least till 11 o'clock.
Good night.
Good night.
Have a good one. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
The, I like turn this off, let me see.